Okay, this is our city council monthly meeting. September the nineteenth and with that. Thanks everybody for coming. I think you do the roll calls.
Mayor, first. Council Phillips.
Here.
Council Richards.
Here.
Council Cruz.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next item is approval of agenda. And I would like to make one recommendation. All right, if we could move up. Under J, planning and zoning, item number two. The Glen's Motorport Facility Discussion. So if we could move J point number two up to before public course. Which is item C. After the number eight item on the water and sewer. We'd be moving item J two, which is on page sixty-one, to before. B one. C, which is on page thirty-three, so. An idea where we're going to from. With that. Any other changes? Make a motion, we have. Approved the agenda as amended, but moving J two up to before B one C.
Second.
Comments? Say none, all those favorites, they probably say hi.
Hi.
Co, same sign. It's approved. Next item is our public forum. We have a three-minute time limit per person. The city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be part of the city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address the city council during the public forum, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and fill out a white form as provided there. Speakers will be recognized only once. You will be timed during this three-minute time period. Begin speaking when the green card is raised by the mayor or a different city clerk. The yellow card indicates you have thirty seconds left and the red card indicates you have reached your three-minute time limit. Let's stop. So with that, I'll invite anybody that would like to speak to public forum.
Good evening, Council, Jan Frost and twenty-five Johnson Avenue. Orno property, some questions for you. When I see the sign now, the sewer project is long from being over. When I see the road closed sign to through traffic. And it appears that the people had issued here a while back. And everybody continues to drive down the road, drive around the signs, or drive through, there's not, it's through traffic. I watched the boat come around my shop, I watched the canoe, I watched all the cars come around, it said road closed. But yet, the traffic was still going through there, so as a council, the project's long from being over. What are you going to do in the future? When the road's closed, they're not using my road now. Imagine that. Just like this. And it's mud. And so I just have a question to the council in the future, what do you plan on doing? I talked with the construction workers, they said they moved a lot of the signs, people don't really care, they just moved the signs out of the way, they drive around the signs and do everything else. Some people never have the pleasure of experiencing the mud, the dig up and anything else because you have a central sewer system they'll come to. But the people like us that do. It's really disheartening to watch the people drive through your thing when they shouldn't even be there. So that's just my question, what the council can do in the future because the projects long from being over. Now, the second thing is, is that along my driveway, they dug twenty-five feet straight down off the edge of my driveway, the whole road out, twenty-five feet. I took pictures of it, I don't know what that's going to do to my driveway in the future. Of settling or doing whatever it does, but they dug straight down along my driveway. And hammered three days and did that and filled it back in. So I took pictures of it, so hopefully, things don't settle and next thing I know, I got issues with my six-inch driveway, my five-six inch board concrete there. The last thing is, is the roadway up there, as long as we're doing this now. It's time the First Avenue Southwest becomes a city street. It is a city street in Orinoco and it's on time that I'm the last individual property owner, there's three of us there that get blacktop when it gets finished this next time. And we may get the roadway because as a sheriff's reporter, that is First Avenue Southwest. Connects to First Street Southwest and it's time that we get the road put back, it's all tore up now, that we get the road put back like everybody else in this town. I'm not asking for anything more. Than anyone else in the city has, I paid my taxes, I do that. And I feel it's time and I see the manhole got put in there, so they're going to dig my road up again because they buried the manhole. Because they'll have to put risers on it, so I know that that's. Buried and it's big hump and everything else, I ended up going back over again and digging my road, the road back up again. Took me an hour and a half with my power washer to wash the wheels off my boat and off my truck, the mud. And I was barely able to back up. Through the mud to put my boat back in my building and that to me is not acceptable in this sense, so. When in the contract, what does it state, what timeframe do they have to put your lawn and the road back? In condition, thank you.
Thank you. Second call for public.
Matt Harder with Harder's disposal, Stewartville, so here to speak on the reference contract that they got put on the agenda tonight, but we'd be more interested in. Attending the meeting, what it goes along the agenda, so I mentioned it and just talked with Sunny at the beginning of the meeting, so. Your current contract waste management has a has a clause in there that notice needs to be given at least ninety days, not more than a hundred eighty days, but at least ninety days. It expires at the end of this year, otherwise it automatically renews. So definitely a short timeframe here, today's the nineteenth, eleven more days before the end of the month to give them notice. If the intention is to take bids and have the opportunity to go with another hauler. Just want to point out that 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 short window exists. Other factor, so we delivered some cans here and they got notified that had to be picked up because of that contract, we weren't even aware of that. But from what I understand and I've been told, I haven't seen any of the invoices, but current rates are higher than what the current contract allows. So just a heads up on that, I looked at, you know, there's four percent CPI clause in there, the original price was for the largest can seventeen and a half dollars. You know, after CPI, that'd be just about nineteen and then recycling started at five and a half with the CPI over the last two years would be six and. I've been told prices are much higher than that and I don't know if they have come in the form of other administrative fees, like environmental charges or what they're tacking those on as, but I don't see in the contract those allowed, so. I just wanted to point that out and we are more than excited for the opportunity to provide a bid out of the city of Orinoco. We serve. Near a hundred communities throughout the state of Wisconsin and Minnesota, we have a contract for Winona County, we haul the recycling and all of Winona County. They were contracted with Fillmore County to transfer their recycling, they have a large material recovery facility in La Crosse where we sort recycling, so my family's been in the business. For about seventy years, fifty, so we've been doing it a long time, we're real passionate about what we do, we love doing it in communities and always bring rates down, bring service levels up, so we really like the opportunity to. Provide a price to Orinoco and we do weekly recycling, it's not a big difference that we have from our competitors in our current contracts, so we generally come in with a lower price and we provide weekly recycling, we provide large carts. Ninety-six gallon carts and we also have split body trucks, so just one truck going down the streets instead of two, so they have a rider down the middle, so we come in, we don't have the two trucks on recycling week. Every week we'll pick up recycling, just one truck and again, I believe we do have a lower rate than we're currently paying for every other week, well, I know we can. So anyway, appreciate the opportunity to speak and looking forward to an opportunity to provide a price.
Yes, thank you. Third and final call for public forum.
Three minutes isn't getting up there. Hi, my name is Randy Peterson, nice to see all of you council members. I am here, I live at one oh five Third Street Southwest and I'm here to check on progress on the property on one fifteen Third Street Southwest. Number one, I'm not able to view, I don't know if it's my capabilities on the internet or not, but the only place that I can see meeting minutes is on the YouTube. Why, but anyway, so if there has been progress or have been talked about progress, I may not know that. But what is the plan for the end of the timeframe and what progress has been made? I live there, I look at it every day, that's where I have my coffee and I look out my back and still see the same things. If the progress is being made inside or whatever, I don't know how that can be, but anyway, that's great, but. Do I not get to know what the progress is being made? And what timeframe we're looking at? You know, this has been a hazard in a number of different ways. How do you know if it's a hazard if it isn't being looked at or is it? I don't know. We, I thought the building inspector came, is that our knowledge that the building inspector came and? Does that or thought that this place was inhabitable, I don't know. Anyway, I just kind of would like to know, I pay my taxes and I have to look at this every single day and the complaints have been in for the last seven years. And I believe that for some reason they haven't been found or all put in a packet and I don't know why that is. Or whose fault or whatever, that doesn't matter, the matter is that I'm here to hopefully have something done. If they can make it look better, great. I don't know how that is, but the hazard part is, is I know that we've had, you know, people in the storage units. When's that going to happen next door to my house? I don't know that, I have animals going in and out of it. That's not, that you can't say that that's anything healthy. I know that there's violations, I believe the code is ninety point one six, item C. Any pools that are stagnant or anything like that could affect the mosquito breeding, everything there. I know that that's a problem, if anyone looks at the aerial view, they can see the many, many, many tarps that are over everything, you can see that on aerial. Anyway, I think that if this was in plain sight, that it probably would have gotten done a lot faster. And that is my concern and I do have a heart, so I just want to know that this is from my heart, I'm not being mean.
Thank you, thank you. Third and final call. The number one, six forty-five. Next item is our petition's request communications and we have a. Warren Aker has submitted a second petition with more names. Sunny has that. Perfect to speak a few minutes about that.
Thank you all for your service, first of all, I used to be on here with the council, I know what you all go through on us on a weekly and monthly basis. My name's Warren Aker, I've lived in the west side of Orinoco for over twenty-seven years. So to get out there, you take left on the street, so I travel that road on a daily basis, I walk on that road, I bike on that road, I'm very familiar with what happened on that roadway. I've seen things posted, I've heard rumors, some of the residents say that everyone drives fifty-plus miles an hour on that road, no one moves over, no one is safe. That is very untrue. There are a handful of people that you're going to see in every city that speed, right? You're never going to get everyone to obey any speed. But I can tell you, I walked there, people who are, people slow down, it's not like we have a bunch of dirt that live out there on that side of town. The west side, the westbound stop sign is definitely going to be a safety issue this winter. I've lived there twenty-seven years and the only thing that I've seen happen out there, there's never been an accident that I've seen or heard of, the only thing that's happened is people going in the ditch on that hill. And that was when they had to get some speed up to get over the crest of the hill. Now, when they're stopping three-quarters of the way up a steep hill, people are going to go in the ditch and I don't know if Rochester School Bus contacted you guys, we did call them, they're going to have a lot of issues there. People with commercial driver's licenses, there's no way they're going to be able to stop at that stop sign and that's going to be a violation on the record, which is not good. I just think there's nothing that we can do with a stop sign going up that hill. And even the stop sign on the westbound side, the stop sign right now is right even with someone's driveway, which is another safety issue. That we should, we should get rid of both of the stop signs. I got seventy-one signatures from residents off of West Center Street and the cul-de-sacs, the West Center Street Services. I went to every household out there except for ten, well, I went to them, but they didn't answer their door. I had zero people that did not sign the petition. Everyone is very concerned about the safety posed by those stop signs. I did a lot of research, I was on, I was in charge of streets and roads when I was on city council, I did a lot of talking with Elston County, I did a lot of talking with the Rochester city people. Stop signs aren't supposed to be used for speed control, that is a major artery servicing a lot of houses. Stop signs are not meant to control speed. We have a radar sign out there, I'm assuming it was placed where it was placed because of the sun. We really should be moving, all the studies show that you should move the radar sign to where your biggest problem is. And that is on the downhill going eastbound on Center Street. So we might have to wire that radar sign in to real power. But I don't think that's a huge cost when you consider the safety issues that the residents that, you know, sort of complained about the safety there now. Or the seventy-plus of us that are concerned about the safety in the future. I don't know how much it costs to hook one of those up, but it can't be all that much. I talked to a lot of the residents that live directly on West Center Street. There, they said that they think the speeds have actually increased in front of their houses and that's what a lot of the studies will show, I have sent a bunch of links to studies. And the studies showed that speeds will actually increase outside of about, you know, fifty yards away from the stop sign. You got the stop sign that's going eastbound, you stop there, I did a little study, if you just coast down that hill without hitting the accelerator pedal, you'll be going thirty-two miles an hour when you get to the bottom of the hill. So you're going to have a problem no matter what, people just have to hit their brakes. That stop sign's not helping anything and what's the natural thing to do when you're at a stop sign? You're going to accelerate, so that problem is going to be worse, so you're going to still be going forty-plus if you're not watching the speed and if that radar sign is flashing in your face. Hopefully, the people that are, you know, conscious about their neighbors will slow down, again, you're going to get the people that don't. We can't, we can't fix that. Others have complained about the traffic noise increasing because. They're stopped at the stop sign, they're going to accelerate, they're going up a hill, so you're having higher, higher traffic noises out there. I don't really want to mention this, but a lot of the people that I talk to are also fearful stopping at that intersection because there is a resident that lives in that area. That has been harassing multiple residents of our city, he will chase them home, he will verbally assault them, he flipped me off last night. He lets the grass grow four feet high in an intersection that people are concerned about safety. If we're going to do stuff, we need to mow those things down, we can make that intersection safer without stop signs. And we, none of us appreciate being harassed by one person on that road. So. To close, I don't know what you guys have to do to get those things removed, but it would be greatly appreciated as the cold weather sets in and. There, there's no way any plow driver can keep that hill safe for us, right? I mean, we know that. He would have to be on there every fifteen minutes and there's no way we're going to have a plow on that road every fifteen minutes during a snowstorm. I rode it sometimes for twelve to sixteen hours after a snowfall. It's not going to camp out there, I don't expect anyone to camp out there, we haven't had a problem on that road, like I said before, until we put these stop signs in. So please get them removed. If there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer anything.
I think the main thing is. Your share of your comments with us, we appreciate that and the petition as well. We've talked to our snowclaw contractor, just like he does all stop signs in the city. He's very diligent, maybe it doesn't happen exactly the way it goes through, but he does sand and salt it more at the stop signs than the normal part of the road, that's. He's aware of that, so I think there's a lot of questions coming into the wintertime that would have helped with the scene. If people are following this twenty mile an hour speed limit coming up to that stop sign in the wintertime, whoever, that should be helped with some of the. Potential issues that you'd make reference to, so.
If you're not going thirty at the bottom of the hill, you're not going to make the crest of that hill during the winter. I mean, people are sliding into the ditch if you do that. The other thing, since you brought up the twenty mile an hour speed limit, I don't know if that's even legally enforceable. What you've done basically is put in a speed trap where it goes thirty to twenty to thirty for no apparent reason. I would, I would contact honestly some kind of a traffic study and see if that is legal and the other thing that on the research that I did. Putting in a stop sign or traffic control signage without a safety and traffic study could actually leave the city liable. So if someone gets in an accident, someone goes in the ditch, because of what you've done without a study, the city could actually be sued for damages.
You have a comment?
Yeah, so. I will say, and I was a proponent for the stop signs because I know, I know the speed that people travel and Warren's a neighbor. And I know my wife signed the petition too, she was mad when she saw the stop signs. I, I can definitely vote for the stop sign in the west coming up the hill. I know it will, it will definitely be hard to get going. My wife was one that went to ditch some years ago because it does turn to ice and you have nothing to do but slide. I, I would challenge the east side one just for the simple fact of, you know. We don't have the money to do a speed table right now, I mean, that probably would be one of the better things, but those are super expensive and this is something that the council can talk about, but. What's the next best thing, what's the next cheapest thing, I think is, was a stop sign, we knew we wanted and had to do something, right? So. That's where we are with it right now, but we definitely don't want to say yes.
My son, my son drives school bus over there and he thought it's really dangerous having them stop signs there.
We talked to Rochester School and I think they were going to give you guys a call.
It's Pine Island, my son drives for Pine Island.
Well, we have Rochester and Pine Island school buses on there, two sets of Rochester and one set of Pine Island, so they're going to have, they're going to have a nightmare with that stop.
But I think, you know, if we would have waited a year to see once the sewer project gets done and everything, then see if we got a problem, you know? I think we got a horse headed guard.
I think what's going to happen, Carlos, you always are going to have a problem, right? Any thorough street, you're going to have people complaining about the speed on that street. There's nothing you're going to do about that, there's always going to be a percentage of people that speed on the highway, there's always going to be a percentage of people that speed on that street because they don't care about the law.
And it's been that way for years, I mean, I guess we haven't had no problems over there, why create a problem?
And I think we created one.
Right.
Well, and I agree. If I could add to, you know, one of, one of the safety concerns that was considered was not just West Center Street, but is it ninth? That.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's.
The connecting one, for those people trying, yeah, First and West Center are parallel and the connecting street was probably. Those people were concerned about being able to make the turns to, to go. Onto West Center or First.
That road's been that way for as long as I've been born and there's never been a problem. I, is it hard, is it hard to pull out sometimes, maybe, but that's traffic, right? I mean, you're not going to solve that.
Yeah, and I do think right now, to your point about the weeds, and it's not just there, I see where, since the hydro seeding was done. I know that people have not been doing, you know, following the ordinance of, you know, mowing up to the street. So the weeds are several feet.
They're big.
And the rocks are in there, so that's why.
So this is the final comment, I guess, we have had, we've been collecting radar data there for a couple of years now. And we haven't checked it recently, but we can sure pull that data any particular week, but. What the data showed us a couple of years ago when we were getting a lot of complaints, that the average speed was less than thirty miles an hour. You did have the people, but the average speed was less than thirty miles an hour and that's what the radar did.
I can name you the five people, it's like, honestly, if an officer just went to their house and warned them about their behavior, I think that would be helpful. Including the resident that lives at the corner of Ninth and Center Street, who is one of the biggest traffic violators.
All right, well, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right. Report from Sergeant Wren. Moving on to water and sewer. Meeting minutes. November. And show which ones were listed. Update on that.
Yeah, start with contract number one, wastewater future plan. There is a memo, it's a memo we always put together for the council and F E C A, but there continues to be activity on the site. A lot of electrical work, a lot of wiring. A little bit of railing work in terms of hand railing on the S P R, some floors on the admin building did get complete. You know, the buildings are, the structures are, you know, maybe five percent complete. Contractor is continuing to do site work, installing fence. That should hopefully get completed over the next week here, along with gates. Contractor is also prepping to do seeding out there and they're also tolerancing for paving and I'm hoping we'll see paving by the end of the week. So that, that piece is moving forward.
When you talk about seeding, are they going to use the same hydro seed that they're using all over?
So hydro seed is a mix of weeds and grass. Actually, they're Minda specs and.
Yeah, I looked it up, because what Minda says, they don't, they don't plant grass, they don't plant lawns, they plant road ditches, so there's a mixture of grass and I forget what they call it, there's, there's quite a mix in there. But there are definitely, it's not, it's not all grass.
So there, there's got to be two dozen Minda seed mixes. And they have a mix for residential lawn and they've got a mix for commercial lawns and they've got a mix for road ditches and they've got mixes for wetlands and for areas with. Lots of moisture and not much moisture and sandy loam soils and different, different seed mixes, so I can send you the seed mixes that are being used on the project. And within that, there is quite a seed mix. The contractor did use that, they're certified seed mixes. And they are the appropriate seed mixes that we use. Throughout the state on these types of projects and so does pretty much everybody else, so. I think that you are right though, that there's a lot of weeds in the. Seeding that especially was done this spring and obviously we've had a very dry summer. And I think that's one of the things that is inhibiting the ability to. Go grass, because I've walked some of those boulevards too and it's hard to find grass, it's mostly weeds and we've talked to the contractor about it, there's some decisions that are going to be, have to be made. You know, how to deal with that, there's a couple of different avenues, but I will send you that seed mix tomorrow so that you can see the different types of seed that are within that.
And I did, so I did see it, but yeah.
Yeah, it's, there's a lot of information on the Minda websites, I think the seed manual is probably fifty pages long, you know, to pick the right seed out of that manual. Anyway.
I heard a comment on blacktop, they're out there to plant within the next week, I'd sure like to see some on our streets.
Yeah, we'll get to the update on the downtown area and the paving of the streets, I'd like to see it too.
But I'd like to see that before they pave out there to plant, I mean.
Well, it's two different contractors, two different projects really, so, you know, we'll take what we can get from, you know, that needs to get done too and. We'll take what we can get from, you know, that that needs to get done too and it isn't getting done at the expense of any working down. Two different contractors. Um. But uh back to the wastewater treatment plant um. We are hoping that uh again, the paving starts. Uh late this week and uh would wrap up next week along with fencing and then that'd be followed by the seed, the trees. Um the biggest update really is the update on electrical components. We had a construction coordination meeting this morning, in fact, and. We have received two of the three uh machine control centers, the M C C um. Equipment that we've been talking about for the longest time. And uh they are getting installed. Uh the last M C C to arrive. Uh has been delayed. They're short of components for that M C C. And that is the biggest M C C, so that is the uh machine control center that goes in the pretreatment building and controls the S P Rs and the pretreatment processes. And so that uh ship date has been delayed till the end of October. October thirty first is the date that they gave us. You know, we've been kind of expecting that equipment for months and months and months and they keep on. Pushing that date, you know, a couple of weeks, a month, and it's getting later and later and. So the end of October that finally arrives and there, there is a lot of wiring, electrical work that has to happen once that equipment gets in, and so that's gonna impact our startup date. And our dates for commissioning. Uh you remember we, we've been talking about um commissioning um in. Uh uh mid to late October into November and then start off late November while the delay in the M C C sh- shipment probably pushes all that back. Two, three, four weeks, and so um. I think at this point, we, we probably need to. Wait a little bit and continue to monitor those schedules and and make decisions as were, as to whether it makes sense to try to start up the treatment facility. Sometime in mid-December or even late December or for if it, if it's a better idea just to wait till the weather warms enough that. Uh we're not fighting January, February temperatures and start up in March. So I think that there's some. Um investigation that needs to be done. One of the things I wanna do is talk to P F A. Uh we've got loan pay payments that'll start to be due. Um but we also have a facility we can operate because we don't have the components and um that is a wide. Apparently widespread issue on these types of projects. In fact, pretty much all, all construction projects are having issue with uh certain electrical components, so. We'll see what they have to say if there's any lenience. I think that'll feed into the decision-making process there. Uh in terms of, we've talked about uh the switchgear and the temp power needed to operate the. Temp power facilities needed to operate the facility in lieu of the switchgear that's not coming until October of twenty four. Um that, that equipment has been geared. Contractor is ready to go with that, but really the first step is to get the M C Cs installed. Um other. Panels and pieces of of system are on, on in route and in in being, being uh shipped, but. That M C C delay is the biggest concern at this point. So we'll continue to monitor that and. Uh to make a decision as to where we're at and when things are coming and how fast the contractor is able to move and whether it's gonna really start up. Um in December or if it's gonna be delayed.
Fitzgerald?
Uh Fitzgerald continues to uh install sewer and water. Uh in fact. Uh they will complete all the sanitary sewer underneath the streets uh this week, and so that. That's a positive thing. They have some uh sanitary sewer in green spaces uh that they'll largely leave uh until later in the fall here. Um but completing all the sanitary sewer under the streets is a big milestone. Um they do have a lot of street work. Street, streets to reconstruct are, and as a concern, I've been talking to uh. Jason Fitzgerald, myself, I talked to him again today. Um they haven't. Haven't rebuilt much for streets really at all. They moped in a crew here last week. They did a little bit of work. Um they weren't here today. They were here yesterday. They're supposed to be here tomorrow and and moving there forward, but I've um. Reiterated that concern that, you know, there's a lot of work to do and um they need to uh. Be diligent and put the resources here to get it done, because we have a fairly short window at this point in time to uh. Do that, so he committed to do, doing that and say they're gonna. Uh get the paving done uh through Batumina space. Uh the Batumina's workhorse paving will, will wait till next spring. And I wanna put between this workhorse down with these. Uh but they are committed to getting layer, the two of us, everything that's disturbed will get restored. Uh that was two minutes reconstructed. Um contractor is also, you know. Uh spreading topsoil, doing seeding and beating that restoration process, so they've been doing that for the last couple of weeks and I think they've. Uh put down some hydro seed and and also seed mulch in in different areas here uh this week. So they're making progress on that front, but there's a fair amount of work to do. Obviously, the workhorse paving uh on the west side um and on the streets, basically all the streets that got uh between space. Last year, uh that workhorse paving was placed this year uh and was completed last week, so that's another step. Uh there's shoulder work uh that needs to be done along the roadway in most areas. That shoulder work will consist of topsoil. Um that's the decision we made. Um. Way back in the design process, but um it will be working on them too. So contractor is making progress. They still have a lot of work to do. But uh they're moving forward. Uh lift station components, we've been waiting, been waiting on uh lift station panels, the electrical components. Uh for the panels, um there's, they're starting to um arrive in late October. Um they already have the pumps and the rest of the equipment, um but that'll. That'll, that'll happen and the big lift station comes first and then. Uh the other four or five lift sta- the other five lift stations uh come over the next couple of weeks following that, so. That stuff does mean, seem to be moving forward, although it's a little later than we'd want. Um. Other questions? Comments?
Ellingson, what are, what are they doing? Are they back in?
Ellingson has moved back in. They're directional drilling some services. We had some services crossing underneath. Uh either, you know, retaining walls or streets um in areas where open cut, we didn't wanna open cut um. And we were able to have an upgraded directional drill there, their directional drilling, the sewer and water services now, and then after they complete that, they'll start. Uh back in um installing the grinder stations and and um structural drilling enforcement to those grinder stations, just like they've done on the west side.
They gonna be able to get that done yet this fall or?
I think, I think by large, um they will get most of it done. Um. That's the other thing that Fitzgerald uh will start doing as their utility crews uh free up. Especially on the west side, uh force main services on the, so the grinder stations uh going through rock. Is, you know, they, they weren't able to directional drill those, so they'll have to open cut those and so that. Those, those crews, as they free up from the mainline stuff, will start in over there and and start installing that force.
Was that gonna be that way over the winter for the residents over there, kind of being ripped up in their yards?
Um, most likely, yes. Um we had planned to start tying those over. Um when the wastewater treatment facility becomes operational and now that we, well, we still haven't. Made that final determination as when that's gonna happen, but I'm concerned that it's not gonna happen. Uh in November, December, like we previously thought it was, so yeah, we're gonna have to think about that. And if I really lose that, but we can't hook them up until that treatment facility is operational. Uh and and the lift stations, of course, so the rest of the piping is in place, but those components have to work or to tie those.
Is there anything you have to do for winterizing that stuff or is it gonna be okay, but it's no winterizing, okay?
In fact, the pumps aren't in, it's just the structures that are in the ground. The pumps aren't in the structures. Um so they'd come and install that and we don't have control panels, things like that out there yet either. Um it's just. A mess in the yard and how we, how we wanna do that.
Just one con- conadot or Uncle Estates. I think you and a kid, they might, would, they would probably be the first ones to hook up that was to happen when we get operational.
Yeah, I reached out to those folks and and provided them a little bit of information about, you know, our connection schedule. I'll have to update them again uh when we know more, but yeah, they would. They would be the first ones. They're the closest. They have the largest flow. Would make sense to get that to the plant soon as we could. Uh and so. Yeah, and and the contractor would do all that. There's some work to that lift station, that their lift station that needs to get completed, and then there's the physical connection. Um the pipes are. Um installed, you know, to one another, but they'd have to physically dig down and disconnect it. Um from going to the wastewater pond that they operate, connected to the pipe going to the treatment facility and. And on the lift station, it would work. So.
All right, um. Any other comments or questions for Joe before we go to the next subject? That's our. Contract for the wastewater system operations maintenance and management. So our previous. Council meetings and water and sewer that was um. Sonny and Joe and Kane, we did contracts and were in negotiations with them now, is that right?
And uh Mike was involved as well. Um you'll remember the R F E required them to submit a copy of their contract. Um and they did that and um Mike had some, some concerns. As you always does about order a little contract, right?
Yeah, I mean, the main concerns were the amount of the insurance that they had. They were offering a four million dollar umbrella. Which to me with a forty-four million dollar plant seemed a little bit light, honestly. But I recommend that you call the own C I T. Do they comment on that at all?
They did not comment.
Okay. Cause they're your insurance provider, sometimes they'll comment on the appropriate amount of coverage, but the company basically said that's all they're gonna offer. In their reply and then I had some other concerns about.
Right.
Um.
So we submitted your revision to them and then they came back again with theirs and they have additional comments and now those comments have been just sent off. Tonight, um just before this meeting.
Yeah, I think there were.
So.
We're working, I think there was other concerns too about the scope of services, right?
And that was in that email that I just sent tonight, so. So yes, negotiations are con- continuing um. And we may be setting up a team when I hear back from.
All right, any questions regarding that? That'll be part of our discussion, we'll talk a bit later, uh our next uh meeting. Special, but the discussions. Right, um. The three notices are in. Packet that I chose, you can resend out, there's gonna be one now, starting in April of twenty twenty-two, so. I found there is a, is a inspection report from uh M P C A that reviewed the restoration projects, so you can review those um. At your leisure as a packet. Uh the next item is our agenda update of bringing ahead Glenn Motor Coach discussion. Eighty sixty-one. At the age. So there's been a couple of iterations of uh work between. Ben Seth and Joe and uh. But I can't sort, I can look at the packet letter that Joe shared and also there is a comments back. So. Joe, how would you like to best proceed with the discussion on that?
Well, I think I can um shape the discussion a little bit uh and summarize that for the. For the council, so along, so this, this. Uh parcel that's being developed was originally part of the Cedar Woodlands three uh subdivision was planted as an outlot. And essentially across the street from the Gas and Go, I think this up there today, along Cedar, uh Cedar's, Cedar. Center Avenue Southeast and the property owner is proposing to develop that and. As a function of that, there is sanitary sewer that was extended uh through the Cedar. Uh Woodlands three subdivision, it terminated um. Uh kind of in the middle of the subdivision uh. Essentially, at that point, the only thing that developed in the subdivision was the Gas and Go, and so the water main. Uh was extended from in town and extended um along Minnesota Avenue and then uh extended um. From the, the Boulevard and Cedar, around along Minnesota Avenue to, to the Boulevard and Cedar. Center Avenue uh along the property line immediately north of the Gas and Go and it terminated there and so. Uh the property owner uh that is developing uh the Glenn's Motor Coach. Uh site needs to connect to that water main as well as a sanitary sewer that's located again along um. The east side of Cedar Center Avenue uh and extend that for their purposes and so. As they develop their site and utility plan, they send that to me for a review and one of my comments was that. They do need to connect to that water main, but they need to extend twelve inch water main. Um for the point where it ended uh along their frontage. Uh along Cedar Center Avenue to um. The point where it connects with Minnesota Avenue, so there's about six hundred and thirty feet of of uh. Trunk water main that they need to extend, uh not only for their benefit, because they get water service out off of it and they get fire protection off of it. Uh there's no hydrants to serve that side of the street, uh but we also need to extend that water main to the south. And also to the east to facilitate other development. So typically when properties develop, we have. Have them extend the trunk facilities through so that we have both access to sewer and water. Uh sanitary sewer is a little bit easier. Um I am asking that they uh do a short extension of sanitary sewer from the point where. Uh it terminates currently, uh so it, it can be extended to the uh west to Outlot C that. Um is. To the north and east of the Glenn's Motor Coach parcel.
And this was on page sixty-eight, just so everybody's kind of looking at the same.
So um. And the issue really comes. Being that this is just a site plan and and individual parcel, how, how to. How to pay for that, and so, you know, city ordinance really kind of says that if you're extending uh or developing. Business or commercial or industrial property in the city. And there is a requirement to extend trunk facilities, whether it be trunk sewer or water, that that it get extended as part of the project along and through that parcel. Cause again, we wanna serve this parcel, but we also wanna set ourselves up to be able to serve. The next parcel and the next parcel and the next parcel, and so that's really what we're trying to do here. Um and so obviously there's a cost to that. Um in this area, we have rock that's gonna have to be activated through. Um and then, you know, there is a, a cost for the increased water main size, you know, and. Typically, it's the developer's obligation to extend the utilities through this in. Um some instances, for example, in residential areas, we would um. And have in the past paid for the difference between, you know, an eight inch main and a twelve inch main, the cost to upsize that, but per the ordinance, we don't need to. But I think that in this instance, I'm. Thinking that there is some public benefit um because, you know, there's six hundred and thirty feet of water main here that gets extended and it is. Partially being uh extended to facilitate development to the south, and so what I'm recommending in the letter here is that. The city participate in that we waive the water availability charge that this. You know, four or five acre parcel would generate. Uh it's about eleven thousand dollars. And allow the developer to not have to pay that fee as a means of off- offsetting some of the additional costs that there. They're going to or would need to encounter in order to extend that trunk facility along their property. Um, and so that's what I'm kind of proposing within this letter, uh however. You know, I don't have the authority to waive city fees and I think the developers here and they're asking uh for even more assistance than. That I'm uh proposing with my, within my letter, so that's, you know, we're we're kind of here to the. Present the issue to the council and and see how you would perceive.
Joe's letter, then what he's referring to is on the top of page sixty-two.
Number five begins at the bottom of.
Yeah, it begins at the bottom with sixty-one, point number five. Talks about our code one fifty-one point two eighty-three about. Um, in commercial and those where your water. For the code that we have. And then. Joe, Joe continues on with what he just described of. There's a difference in the estimations of the cost up. From eight years to a twelve inch over six hundred and thirty something feet. Eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty and I believe. Um, and Craig's response was like thirty-four thousand, I think. You wanna comment on? Will you come and throw them on your thirty-four thousand or?
Yeah, absolutely, um thank you, Mayor and Council for uh listening um to. Uh this and discussing this here tonight, my name is Craig Britton, I'm a civil engineer with with Seth here representing the owner. Of the project and that's Marquee Construction, they're developing and constructing. The uh Glenn's Motor Coach facility um for them on that lot, um and I do have a handout here if that would be like the. Hand that out, it's got an aerial with uh with some water mains there. Um, yeah, Joe did a a nice job of explaining and then team this up here. Uh but I think what we're finding with the with the cost, there are two costs uh that are. Um that are drastically increasing the the cost of the project if this requirement was uh. Uh was upheld and um it's become becoming overly burdensome and um it's really um. Beginning to question the feasibility of this of the project in total. Uh when this development was originally done, so Cedar Woodlands uh third. Uh that's everything south of Cedar Point Road and uh east of Minnesota Avenue. Uh there in this area, that that dark blue line that extends all the way up to Advanced Building Center. Uh there was approximately thirteen hundred and fifty feet of uh twelve inch water main that was extended. As part of that development, um and that was included in the development agreement that. Uh the developer was obligated to extend that the thirteen hundred and fifty feet. Um, they did run the water through the site um and then up to uh what is Outlot A, uh that's where the uh. Uh community subject is over there, uh just east of the Gas and Go. Um, so as we read through the development agreement when they were uh going through the planning process, process um um uh process. Uh we looked at uh total costs that would be um, you know, outlined in the development agreement obligations to the owner. Um and we didn't see any um requirement to extend to um to the end of the parcel. Uh there is water main over on the east side of the property, um that's just east of Outlot C, that's in. Uh Cedar Point Road, um there's an eight inch water main down there, so that is extended to that parcel to the south. And um and so that was, that was one point, uh so we knew we had to extend the services out and that's, that's. Uh to serve Outlot or the Outlot C and then the Glenn's Motor Coach Parcel, and that's in the lighter lighter blue there. Uh so that was all included in um, e- except for that trunk going to Outlot B. Um, the owner uh that I'm representing and and that owner of that lot had. Had worked out an arrangement for the extension of that of that water and sewer there. Um, so the the material cost, actually, we we had the uh the contractor. Uh put together a list of uh items, including all the uh all the fittings, all the um. Uh pipe increase in size, the difference of that. Um and they had about fifty, fifty-three thousand um dollars just in material. Um, material cost increases. Um, what they also found is they they dug some test pits um down in the southern portion of the site and the south, the west portion of the Glenn's site. And there's uh between four and a half to five feet of rock, uh bedrock that's in that area. Uh we did boring's across the site um when they went through the planning process, but. Um, there were no boring's taken in that southwest corner, so we didn't know what the depth to rock was at that time, but um. Uh but with that rock excavation. Um and their unit prices are are higher because this is a smaller scale, so I think when we compare to the. Uh project that's going on right now, it's not only with uh this year. Um, the numbers look a little, a little different just because of the the economy of scale that you received though. Um, from a larger quantity, but um that rock excavation um totaled about forty thousand dollars. Is what they, what they had, so we're talking close to a hundred thousand dollars for that extension. Um, from the point at Outlot A down to the corner, the southwest corner of the of Glenn's. Uh more or more to parcel. So that's, so we're um. So the the water main can be extended through there, but we're just asking if that is a requirement, then there's a. Uh there's a um an obligation from the city to pick up additional cost between the um twelve inch. Um, um and six inches we had a plan. Um in the original development agreement, the city did pay for the upsizing of the twelve inch to um eight inch or from eight inch to twelve inch for. On the Cedar Woodlands uh third development as well, so. Um, that was um in in the development agreement, so and then it, so the city picked up the. The cost of the additional uh materials. And um that additional two hundred and sixty feet to the south to get to the southwest corner. Could be done as part of this project. Um, or else there's, there's also um. Water main there in the dark blue just on the northwest corner of the Gas and Go. Uh that could be extended in the future to um. Uh to serve the um any properties to the south and to expand the system. So we're just looking um tonight for your inspiration.
Okay. Uh extending the, just that last comment about extending the water along west side of Gas and Go then. Um. That would be an issue of that cost, who pays for that too going forward?
Correct, and and it would be somewhat similar to what the developer of this. Development was required to do, extending for that thirteen hundred and fifty feet, um if it's. Close to three hundred ninety, uh four hundred feet from from the point and then to get it into an easement, so it had to have anyone. From that um where it takes a ninety there to go to the southwest and then extend it along that property with any expense.
Well, as engineers, I'm sure you're well aware of water looping and how important it is. And um. So we're. You know, right now we're left with the position of our code saying. The twelve inches in the, in the right away. Through a development, so if that was to be extended down to what Joe's proposing. And with the eight inches over there going forward, which to the south is is still uh township land, but we. We're fairly encouraged that development of that land will occur and so um. That does allow uh water looping to occur and. Cause we don't think we're stuck with either somebody paying for the west side of Gas and Go or paying for the west side of. Your property, Glenn's, Glenn's Motor Coach property to where we would connect, so that's why the. I think the code is very clear, just like. I can't speak. Previous council and what they agreed to do with. Um Cedar Woodlands uh third, that's uh that's. I guess that's another issue, but the point is that we really have our. Our code that we like to stick to where we've um. We're in a position where we we see development coming and um. We wanna make sure that we're doing the best for taxpayers and and how we service infrastructure to any new developers as well. I think too that we've. Um, made a, an effort to, as Joe has explained about the water real drop. Using the, the water availability charge in exchange for. Uh, the construction. Um. I really. I don't know that much about cost and everything, but it just seems like that's a. Uh, a huge number. Maybe it's all right for for the fittings and everything, but um. We're just trying to make some type of good faith effort to help you out too. Any comments?
I think it's good uh to stick with the code, like you said, Ryan, with with uh the twelve inch. Especially with looking at the future, what might be going on, then all of a sudden, two years from now, we're going, wow. You know, we have is an eight in there, we need to have a twelve. Um, so I understand that part behind it, um. I also take a look at, you didn't make a core example that there was along that line in that property. Um, so would that be, you know, a city's. Cost because you didn't take a core example there to know that there was rock underneath there? You know, I mean, I look at that, that's kind of like, is that the city's fault or or the? More construction that was going on with that time and especially. You know, when we had turned around and and basically dynamited all the way up Minnesota Avenue, that it was pretty obvious that. There's rock all the way along there when they were doing that, which was last year. So anybody who drove there had to realize that there was rock. You know, so. I'm just looking at it that way, that, you know, I understand you're wanting. The city to pick up some of it, but it's like, was it really our fault behind that? I. Hard time. Chewing on that one.
If I may, Mayor, we, so we did have nine boring's throughout the site and that, those were in the locations of the building. Uh the sewer and water going to the north where we had planned to extend the services to that, but. Uh because that obligation was not in the development agreement, there was no reason to um taking boring's in that southwest corner because. It was, it was not an obligation that was outlined in that original development agreement. And this lot was part of that original development. So that is.
Right.
Well, and 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 finally, so that there is, and and again, there is water. Uh that is extended into that parcel to the south as well, and that's over on the east side of of the lots. Um as part of the Cedar Woodlands third development.
I was just gonna make a comment about the development agreement for the Cedar Woodlands uh development. Um. This Glenn's Motor Coach parcel, it was planted as an outlot. Um. It wasn't served with utilities. As part of the site plans, they just serve. Really, the uh. Um. Gas and Go parcel and set it up for um service of the other parcels that were in the main part of the plant, not the outlots. None of the outlots were served with utilities, so any of the outlots that are developed, whether they, you know, cause. They didn't know what they were gonna do with them, so they didn't know if. Uh they were gonna further subdivide them, if they were gonna be developed as is, they, they didn't know, that's why they're developed as outlots and not just regular lots. And so I'm not sure that it's necessarily fair to point at the development agreement and say, well, didn't talk about providing trunk utility or. Providing utility service to the outlots, well, no, it didn't, 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 didn't contemplate that, cause they weren't supposed for development. So.
So in your design of the both the water and sewer following. Uh Cedar Center Avenue. Um have you looked at putting, and we did this from several locations in our sewer project. But both the water and the sewer in the same trench, especially going through a rock. Have you evaluated that and cost savings to do that?
We haven't at this time, but um you know, there isn't a lot of rock up there, so um I think they were hitting about a foot of it. Uh maybe up to two feet, so uh they're planning to rip that um in having that um. Um, in separate trenches, uh cause they're not running into the amount of rock, uh bedrock that they are in the southwest corner of the site, so. Um, that is something that we will uh will will look at, is uh running those in conversation.
So the rock you're referring to that you're concerned about is on the southwest corner? Not where the blue line is running currently?
Correct, there, there we have about a foot to two feet of rock, it is, it's uh.
We're still at that seven foot level.
That's correct, yeah, yeah. With the proposed grades and everything, so, you know, if we can pull that farther out of the ditch, um. Um, you know, we can gain some cover that way too. So we'll look at those options, but.
So to run the sewer line or to run the water line from essentially. From the uh, goes into the building. There's another. Two hundred and thirty feet of just the water line itself, right? Going to this stuff. Right.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, the. Main point of attention, I think, really. And plan to put that in and. We're asking you to. Facilitate uh future development and and provide uh. Fire protection in that area and, you know, that's one of the reasons we're looking to waive the. Uh water availability fee to kind of soften that, specifically that two hundred foot chunk of water be there.
If I could just clarify, Joe, it's. It's not so much that we're asking them to do that, we're, we're asking them to abide by our city.
Yeah.
Not so much an ask, it's, but it's a. Enforcement, no? City code.
You know, and there's other option or other things that, you know, for example, there's a green belt requirement that. Requires plantings along the uh. Uh east and north. Um property lines adjacent to what was, is uh plant as our, our two zoning, and so. Um, we're also asking to incorporate some trunks and and screening there. As 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 is required. And some other miscellaneous things.
Right, yeah, I know, we're in an agreement with those uh review comments. Um, it's, it's really just, it just comes down to the cost of that, it's close to a hundred thousand dollars that uh. That uh, that we feel, you know, or we burdened some to the lot and. Again, knowing that service had to be extended because I'm Bill mentioned, it is an outlot. They're not having to extend the water. If the water was to go in that corner, I mean, straight up Minnesota Avenue at the time this development went onto it then. Probably the thing to do to extend it to the end of the property. Uh cause right now, if not, it is part of that original development, it was extended to uh the end of the property of that lot more, so. Just looking for some help on the, on the cost participation of that.
One of the other things that I would kind of point out, you know, there is an economy of scale here, the Fitzgerald prices that we have on the sewer and water project are. Significantly less than what developers looking at. On a unit price basis, you know, per foot and. Um. Like the cubic yard of rock excavation, those types of things, so you know, ma- maybe. Um, maybe the developer could talk to Fitzgerald, maybe we could talk to Fitzgerald's on the developer's behalf. Um, I'd be happy to help with that if that would be useful, but.
Yeah, before he pulls equipment out of town, he might be able to.
Well, it's uh something that can be done, you know, in November, December and. You know, I don't know if they'd be interested in doing the work or not, but. Um.
Of course, nothing to ask.
Doesn't cost anything.
It'd be good to, to, to talk about that and see the other options that are available.
Yeah. That, you know, just, I, I, I think everybody recognized that it. It costs some money and none of us wanna impose any hardship on anybody, um. And so we're, we're trying to find ways to facilitate the most. Economical way to do this, but still comply with. The requirements and the code and the management practices.
Could you have an answer back then by our next session to take a look at that for? What they would do, if it could be interested in.
Well, I, I think regardless, the developer would be paying for it, so I don't. No, all I think that we're really asking. Of you is, you know, based on my interpretation, I, I proposed as. A compromise is to waive the water availability fee. And I think. And I think that's one thing that we would like guidance from the council on, is that okay? Do you wanna not do that? Do you wanna waive the entire fee? Do you wanna go beyond that? That's what Craig really asked me.
I think, in my opinion, I, I think it's worth a good faith effort. If we're going to whack these for eleven thousand dollars, if that will help order off setting that thirty seven thousand dollars. Yeah, the whack was ten thousand nine hundred, I think, based on the four acres, so, you know. Along with Joe approaching Fitzgerald to see if they get, because they buttoned miles of pipe. Nineteen miles of pipe. So there may be an alternative there for you really to consider that, that we could offer that too. You know, also to the cost.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, bringing that up. I'll, I'll bring that to the owner. That, and, and again, with, with the extension of the waters, one through two, but then we also have the hydrants and, and a hydrant would be required for the Glenn's Motor Coach facility. But there are some other items that, that may provide that, that larger public benefit that.
That extra hydrant would help add some go to, I'm sure.
Correct, yeah, and they, I think they have one down in the southwest corner of their site. But if they have one on the front, wouldn't even, wouldn't be eligible as well for them. So there'd be an added benefit to.
So, I guess the takeaway from, on this particular issue is that if you wanna, you're really looking at having to go, do a quick follow up with Fitzgerald or preference, get you in contact with that person to see if there's something we can do for the price of the pipe and the fittings for that extra. And bring that back to council or back to Joe and Sonny. And let's see what that figure is first before we do anything with the whack fee right now until we get some idea of what kind of cost you're getting. But that's a possibility, I would say.
And there's also a timing, I'm going into this as well, just with winter approaching and I'm trying to go vertical with the building as well. So with that in mind, we'll, we'll be in touch with Sonny and Joe here tomorrow to talk a little bit more about that. I, I know Jason as well, so I can reach out to him and see.
So I, I might suggest that if the council's amenable to waiving that fee that you vote to do that, and if they want to bring it back, they can bring it back. But that's at least what I'm kind of hearing from you guys tonight, at least then he has an answer. Right, he knows that piece.
Hey, well, and, no, because I mean, why have these fees if we're gonna forgive them all the time? This town has caused a lot of money, we got a lot of cost coming and we had old rights, we hit a lot of solid racks that we didn't know, we're a hundred and twenty, hundred and forty percent over on rock.
According to rock, yes.
Yeah, you know, so I mean, we're gonna eat a lot of that, so, I mean, I have trouble eating beer, roots and other top city.
Well, that's why I brought it to you, it's not my decision, I, I'm just bringing it to the decision makers. It's, it's a, you know, eleven thousand dollars is a lot of money. That eleven thousand dollars is a lot of, it's a lot of fee.
It is, probably a hundred, you know, is a lot of money for the taxpayers too. I mean, we, we're all in business and I mean, everything continues to raise. And I do feel sorry for them, but, you know, you just gotta edit on, you know, they're gonna do. Raise the price of the bus stores, easy way to recover it, you know. That's just my opinion, everybody's got their own opinions.
I, if, if I might just give an update where this project is in terms of time. We had the initial review of, of use in terms of did this fit into the V two zoning? That was back in April. And I'm trying to remember the date of when we, we've actually have only issued a footing and foundation, footing permit. That was on a verbal basis because Joe had not completed the grading and site plan. So if that was, that was their option, whether or not they wanted to proceed with putting the footings in prior to Joe's final review and as well as looking at the the plan review and the zoning review to make sure that everything would proceed. And they did choose to, to go ahead and, and put the footings in. So, so that's kind of where this whole project at, correct me if I'm wrong, Craig. This is where they're at a total standstill right now because because of this, Joe's work has not been completed and approved.
Right, if the words in my, my reviews have been completed, it's just we've gotta come to an agreement with the developer and this is the item that seems to be the biggest sticking point.
It seems that we're again at the eleventh hour or eleventh, eleventh hour and forty five minutes. And you come and, and ask instead of being at the first hour. And, and it's just numerous things that have been thrown at the council, not on your part, but other things that are always the last minute. And it doesn't give us a chance to really look and review and to think about some of the other options that are available. So, I mean, that's, that's my personal opinion on this too. I understand your point, but, you know, to hold the city residents responsible for that, you know, again, I don't think is, is right either, that we should have an opportunity to take a look at this, think about it, get all the options that there are available before we turn around and put anything up for a vote. And I understand that you're at that footing point that there is with building that goes behind it. But again, this is the first time it's been presented to us. We weren't presented with this project back in March or April, we're presenting it to us now today. You know, this didn't even go through planning and zoning on anything that was going on, it's just got trumped in us. And I don't think that that's necessarily the right way either, when you're looking at some of these codes that are in there, you know, for different things, so.
But, but in defense of that, it met the criteria of city code.
I understand that.
So there was.
But now we have to vary this too, to go along with that. So anyway, that's, that's, that's my two cents worth off of this. I think we need to think about that and see the options that are available.
And I can't say I'd be comfortable in voting, because I mean, this was just basically front of us.
Yeah. And then we didn't get our package until yesterday morning, you know, which doesn't even give us much time to really do any research that there is for us alone, you know, so.
Well, let's, you know, table at the same time, let's work with Joe Fitzgerald to see if there's some opportunity for some savings for you and, and still work out what the city would like to do as well.
I do appreciate your time and listening to our request and, and staffing and great work, but so.
The other issue is the greenbelt. What about that at all?
I don't know that that's controversial at all. I mean, there's a greenbelt requirement in the code and we put that out to the developer and comply here to I think it's written there, and comply with it.
Yeah, I think the other thing was, was with the pond that there's gonna be some issues with that, right? On the, on the drain pond or field that I, I, maybe I'm a shred of, but they're, I thought it was running tight on that parcel. But are we okay with everything on the greenbelt then? Now, would you, you agree with?
We're in agreement with, yeah, meeting the ordinance on that, that's, that's, that's not an issue.
My comment letter addresses several technical, Brian, but as I, I'm assuming you don't have any concerns about those technical things.
Right, thank you, Chris. Hey, welcome back to us, agenda of public works on page thirty three. Arborist. Nobody have any, Joe, Aiden, Joe, and Ken, George.
Not much to say here, twenty thousand dollars funded for tree removal citywide. We've got a lot of tree work planned and we plan on using up those funds for twenty twenty three. I'm requesting to use those funds.
And if you look back on page one twenty nine, there's nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars left in the budget, so.
Yep, there is funds available, like I said, I just, I plan on using it this year. We've got a lot of trees and a lot of parks and a lot of right of ways and they need attention.
I make a motion, we approve Aiden working with Arborist. Prove up to nine, up to nineteen thousand dollars to spend for the balance of the year for citywide tree care.
Let me second that.
Any other comments? I think none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? Approved? Next item is a mower, or location of mowers and this where we need to purchase some more and the trade in value from Hilltop. Pretty much what we do every year, continuing that relationship.
Yeah, we've done this, we've done this, this is our eighth mower now. And keep trading in our oldest one and, and getting a new one. And as you see in my memo there, this is the same price as last year's trade in, so. Good news there, you know, we didn't lose value, we didn't gain any, but we didn't lose any. So this is a, of course, this is one and done for me. This is, this is a, a good offer. We do have the option to sell outright, sure can go down that road. We could set bids, we could, we could do all sorts of things, we can auction, we, we can do all that. Now with that, that takes time, takes time out of my day and, and I just want everyone to be aware of that. You know, we, we've tried selling things here at the city before and, and you get the tire kickers, you know what I mean?
Can I ask you one question? Why wouldn't it be to put out, out on sealed bids, taking any of your time? You put the lawnmower out on sealed bid, why would it take any of your time?
Well, that's, that's fine and dandy, I, I won't touch the sealed bids, I don't have anything to do with that and that.
Yeah, they'd go to city hall.
Yep, then I'm completely out of it, yep. Kind of like the trade in value, like it's, it's, it's done, you know, it's. I, I'm open, I'm open and I'm willing to do that, sealed bids or, or sell it outright, however you guys want, I can do all of those things.
I think you've had, I could, all right, go ahead.
We were saying take it to an auction, that's what you said.
Yeah, or even take it to an online auction.
Yep.
In your fourth, tell it.
Yeah.
Yep.
So this, I just wanna comment on the relationship with Hilltop, I mean, we've done this for eight years now.
Yep.
You've got a good relationship. You explained to me, we had some mowers down and they gave us a lower loner.
A loner, yep, our old mower, you know, they, they keep our mower for a year or so and then finally sell it. And, but yeah, we did have some more troubles this year and we were able to get that loner from, from Hilltop that was seamless. But regardless, I will, I will do whatever the council decides if we wanna sell or auction or I just know in front of you tonight, there is a, a proposal.
So I think that relationship is worth something and even the point of even having some repair done for out of warranty that was done this year too, I believe, I just told you that too.
Yep. Yeah, this year we had a tough time with the mowers breaking down and some odd things, gas tanks and that stuff happens, so. And that's, that's been part of why we wanna rotate our, our, our mowers and keep them current and not let them get too many hours on them.
I'd like to make a motion, we buy a new lawnmower and keep our old ones sent out on bids. Or sell it, you know, however.
Who puts a going market on that stuff? Do you have any idea? Jim, you're pretty good at that stuff.
Yeah, what is it, three years old? Three years old, yeah, three.
Is there a second?
So, I'm sorry, just to clarify the motion.
Make a motion to buy a new one and keep it over, to sell out on bids or however, or we choose.
No, I agree, I'm buying a new one, I know we need to do that and move that, so that, that's, that's a given, okay.
Agreement there, yep.
You know, and we're gonna get it from Hilltop if we go that way too and buy it from them. So we've got that, so we'll keep that relationship. I just wondered what the, the market was for, for used, if it's, so if we try it and we don't get what we want out of it, can we get a trade in value from Hilltop or?
I will guarantee you, I'm the president of the Arnold Cemetery Association, we're more eager to buy this lawnmower. But I know we can, I can't buy it, but I will guarantee you the bid will be better than what the trade in is. So there is no loss to the city.
No, no, I understand what you're trying to say.
I mean, we went through this last year, I called the guy the next morning, yeah, absolutely, because he was gonna make way more.
We need a second if we're gonna continue discussions.
Okay, you second it.
I'll give a second on that one.
Okay, discussion?
Think you say you're.
And it's for sealed bids, is how you wanna accept that?
Yeah, true.
That way Hilltop still gets the business if there is.
They can bet it if they wanna.
I just need to check the budget because what I had proposed here is, is the ten thousand and change, which was in the budget. I don't know, Sonny, maybe you've got that in front of you, I, if you don't, that's.
No, we'd be, we could have eight, something one thirty.
Parts and rec line item forty two nine oh three.
Forty, forty five one twenty. Budget shows twenty two thousand, R M for ground mower.
Yep.
As Joe was a balance, or a balance of twenty two thousand one hundred and eighty.
So there's, there's fun there, something.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion to sell or to buy a new one and to trade or sell the, with sealed bids on the old mower, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, aye. It's approved, so.
Thank you.
See what happens.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
We'll know by next year.
So next time is, first responders. Trees, roads is all, oh, Joe, an update on crack sealing, that's the end of the thing.
Yeah, it did get finished, we're slightly under budget and the crack seal, the fog seal, silkworm fog seal and, and striping are complete.
Looks nice.
It's very nice. Slightly under budget, that was good.
It looks good too.
It looks really good, yeah.
Our department.
That item, that story, just item on page thirty five, it's the F Y I about.
Oh, yes. Not really any crease.
It's like everything else going up.
Yeah, it's just a symbol. Yeah, it's just a symbol.
And the regular rock salt is the same, so they kept that price, which is good.
Um, next item is fire department, Dan has a memo there, um. From happy grants. Come back to council when Sonny completes the paperwork, I guess.
And I have not yet received that, the C N O.
You haven't received what?
The paperwork from, on that grant, yeah.
Oh, from the pagers?
Yeah.
The pagers, the two pagers, yeah.
I forgot what her name is, but, yeah.
Uh, the Minnesota, I can't remember.
They're just, well, those pagers are expensive, aren't they?
Thousand bucks a piece. I relieve.
Oh, I, on this one today, I just wanna make a comment on, on that, if I could, back to where we were talking about from uh Dan's memo. Um, Wednesday, um, eleventh of October. They're gonna be having a fire prevention and I think it was really interesting and what they had talked about with cooking and safety. Um, and how to put out kitchen fires and everything else that there is to help. Residents, I thought that that should be mentioned, that we keep that in mind, I think that should be advertised. I think that's gonna be really good. I guess.
And that is scheduled to go in the newsletters.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I, I just wanted to make note of that, 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 what they talked about doing, I think it's gonna be good for everybody.
First responders. Then September fifth meeting.
Two other things that we're, if I could, two other things that we're doing, fire department and first responders are doing. In October is older options, which is a organization to help uh troubled youth. Uh, they're coming in and touring the fire hall, uh, they'll do their trucks, but uh, put on the gear, spray some water. Have, you know, have good experience there, learn what we do for both fire and first response. We're also bringing in the Girl Scout troop from Pine Island, coming tour, and they'll be making their own first aid kits. Uh, with the first responders, after going through stations on basic first aid and CPR. More of our community outreach that we're, we're doing.
And the CPR is Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of October.
We're also putting on the CPR for the community, free to the community. Um, through uh Michelle Dyer, who taught our last one. We can take up, I think fifteen people on that. So, we'll be spreading the word via Facebook and Instagram and.
Um, first responders has a new member, Sean Laban. I make a motion, we approve uh Sean Laban for first responders.
I second.
The comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And twenty-four, and we're down to the rescue one replacement. Your spreadsheet, there is some spreadsheet of information and uh, that are left me.
Starts at page forty-four.
What's that?
It starts at page forty-four.
What spreadsheet are we talking about?
Uh, the one for the replacement. For rescue one, the option summary.
Okay, right.
Right, that's where we're at, so.
Okay. So, I break down, so, yeah, I see what we're talking about is whether it's Dodge, Ford, Chevy, GMC, right? In your packet, you should have, it should be a spreadsheet that tells you the pricing on all of those. Um, we, it was the state.
On page fifty-one, you got a copy of it in your packet, uh, the spreadsheet with. A blue collar and a blue row at the top, yes.
Where they, they do take vendors on them, but um, there are some vendors around here, but. The road a dog will, they might not have the state bid, but they will match this. Select Dodge.
What's your choice?
Our choice?
Hmm.
Um, we, I guess, doesn't matter to us, other than we already have Ford in-house, but. I, you know, here's the cost, I leave it up to council to, to help us out. It would be great though to not go with a base level, see there's like a. Dodge Ram base level tradesman that doesn't have much at all on it. And given that, we're gonna have this for twenty-five years, hopefully. But yeah, nice to, you know, go up to a, you know, for forty-five hundred dollars, go up to the nice, it's trim level. Costs us about a hundred and eighty dollars more a year, over the cost of the, for the life of the vehicle.
I mean, it's good to have something you enjoy using too with your vehicle that goes on with it and. You're gonna be using it a little bit more than once you do some of the other stuff with what's going on with the township and what you do going into the township, so.
I'm guessing every year, the receivable future will be two hundred calls plus.
So, I mean, that's, that's important for everybody getting in and out of it and being able to do that, so.
It's quieter.
Yeah, and again, again, it's something, if, if you've got that, you did the work to kinda check everything else out. Um. Actually, the. Dodge is more expensive than what the Ford is.
So what, um, which is great, through the rest of the specs from sure, Everest and uh.
Back of our fire safety.
Yeah.
So, the toppers, we asked Everest and fire safety, I might even have, I might have Kent come up and help me talk about this too. Cuz he was an integral uh, on this, let me get this done, um. So for the topper, we looked at two toppers, um, we initially looked at a space cap that was a fiberglass topper that sits on the back of the. Vehicle, all lit up compartments, you know, openings. You know, we can configure it to carry oxygen bottles, we can car- configure it to carry our, our scoops or meds, everything else, right? Um, Everest, um, when we looked at them, we said we want a different option. And they came up with Iconix, which is just another brand, that cap is an aluminum cap. So, um, so it's fiberglass or aluminum, space cap comes in white. Iconix comes in three colors, but matte black would be the color scheme that we would want. Um, so. They actually come out to the same price, which makes sense because they're all competing against each other for the same. And we're, use the same, we call it, we call it a trim level for what those boxes would give us.
Which one do you like working with better?
For the box, or the topper?
Yeah.
I have a horse a piece.
So there's nothing.
They're, they're both gonna have a hundred percent rollout shelf. So, Iconix X may have a little bit more configured, configurability or whatever, cuz you can choose how many doors you want.
Okay.
Okay. You can choose how the doors open, whether they swing to the side or swing up.
We want up.
I don't think we have that option on the space cap.
Right.
And you get what you get.
Um, and we do also have to um, either wrap or paint the space cap to go black, cuz it only comes in white. Right, just like John Deere tractors only come with.
Right.
So.
So really, that's more expensive, if you really put these together.
Cause you're gonna be paying.
That you gotta pay for painting.
Did you wrap, did you wrap that cheaper than it is to paint it?
So, it, so in, in that thirty-two thousand dollars that you see for fire safety USA, that includes the wrap. And painting that has to take place on the entire truck and that includes the space gap.
Oh, okay, right, so.
So Everest does not do wrap and striping, so that's why we went to image three sixty in town. In Rochester, who's done other work for us, and they, they bit out like forty-five hundred and change to do. If we went with the Iconix, which we, they don't have to do anything on the top, on the topper, it's already black. Right, it's blue, black, and we're red on the truck, other than graphics, other than graphics, but yeah, graphics, but um. They don't have to paint it or anything, they're wrapping, so.
It's included into them.
Yeah, but then if you look at. Upper prices.
So, the.
Yeah, but the bottom line, but if they've already got that included in there for the wrap and, and, and everything if there is, so.
So really, it came out to about, about the same. Cost within five hundred dollars of.
Amazing.
You know, um.
So, you know, before the meeting, I asked, I looked at the fire safety. Hold on, page forty-seven.
Yep. I did a math, so how did I come up with that thirty-two thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, I came up with, thirty-eight thousand, or thirty, what is it, thirty? Thirty-eight eight plus nineteen hundred shipping and a thousand miscellaneous supplies, so. It's like forty-one seven.
So, uh, how did I come up with the thirty-two thousand here then? You take one oh five, minus fifty-four thousand. Okay. That'll give you. Everything, everything that they need to put in there but the truck or the chassis. But then you add up. Top line of labor, ninety-three hundred, plus nineteen, plus eleven hundred, plus nine, plus seven sixty, all the way down. And then at the bottom, which I missed my first time too, was shipping and miscellaneous supplies, which is another twenty-nine hundred. So that brings us up to, up to the thirty-two thousand.
Okay, uh, my thirty-eight eight, um, I was double counting the nineteen thousand.
Okay.
Thirty-seven.
Be a heck of a box. Okay, other things that the bid includes, um. You know, with, with the box and with, with the lighting, so it's the, the emergency, nice emergency lighting, you know, NFPA says we have to have flashers on all sides. It's got all that, it's got work lights, a lot of the lights now are flashers plus work lights, send there, and they're kind of flush to the. To the, you know, trim of the truck, um, which is nicely stay out of our way, but get the illuminate. Um, there's an inverter installed on, on both of these, so we can, well, it's, well, it's uh. On shore power, it's charging everything, radios, iPad, suction, flashlights, you name it, right? Med storage, yeah, and the med storage, which I'm gonna get to, um. When we're offshore power, right, we're running off the battery, but the inver- inverter gives a, will charge everything as we're out. And it'll give us one-ten outlets as well, which is good for us when we do our rehab tent because we've got fans and we've got lights. That would be great to run off of that instead of having to lug around the generator. And it's, and it's charging everything at, at the same time, um. We did um, go with, we've been searching for this, thought we'd do it maybe on one of our trucks this year. Um, right now, we have beverage fridge that we're using on the ambulance, um, to keep our meds at the right temperature. Um, we've got about twenty-five hundred dollars worth of meds sitting on both rigs each. So, in these, in these bids is a controlled med space, so it's almost like a twelve by twelve by eight. So we can put in EpiPens, L B U R L, and the other meds that we, that we carry Narcan. And it keeps them at that, that constant temp, so it will cool or heat based on, you know, whatever the conditions are. Um, so, you know, cuz if we would lose our, our meds, you know, that's about twenty-five hundred bucks down the drain, you know. So, it's a, it's, it's in there to help us, you know, protect our investment in meds. Because that is one of our largest costs, if you look at our operating costs. So, that's initial.
So when this unit arrives, what other costs are. Involved with making it operational? Sure, take it out of the old ambulance or?
So, sure, so, um. We would have, we, we'll have to double check on a few things, we'll make sure that, um, the, you know, we have to have the radio switched over, right? Um, we have to, well, we'll, um, there might be some upgrades that we wanna do on, on the truck, maybe. Not sure if these, if these trim levels come with like running boards, things like that, that'll be, you know, available or, or helpful to us. Um, it will take some time, you know, to, to move everything over, you know, all of our meds, all of our bandages, you know, trauma stuff.
That doesn't cost.
Doesn't cost anything, so we'll just take it from rescue one and put it on a new rescue one, just takes time.
What about cost, if you had to guess, so like you're saying, running boards, um, switching the radios over?
Yep, switching the radios over, um.
Boom to the wind, guess.
Yeah, I would, I would say, if you give us another five grand, I think we could probably. We probably covered any of the miscellaneous that, that goes into outfitting that truck.
You might be in your twenty-twenty-four budget. See the twenty-twenty-four budget or payment?
So, sure, yeah, so this would, this would probably, we're looking at about four months out, um.
It'll be January.
So January, so.
Does it get, does it, do we have to pay anything this year?
So, um. They would like us to pay, when they get the chassis, they'd like us to pay for the chassis this year or when, when, then when it arrives. It's kind of what, what is taking the longest for that, you know, it takes about a month for them to put everything on. Um, so, it could, it could arrive this year, it could arrive after the first January.
So whenever arrives.
Whenever arrives, about fifty, fifty thousand.
And we talked, uh, Arnold County, you've blown a hell.
Yes.
What, what?
We have an insisting contract with them right now, um, and their annual. Um, budget is, is not set until, um, March next year, so they're. They're on a fiscal year, April one through May thir- March thirty-first.
Second, second week, uh, second week of March, yeah, so what are we getting?
Eight thousand dollars.
Bless you, whoever sneezed, yeah.
I'm sorry, oh yeah, bless you.
I just heard it, I wasn't looking, so.
So we're, we're currently, Sonny, you're saying we currently get eight, has there been any talk about raising it or they, they wait till the budget period to talk?
No, we are, we are in discussions right now for a. Healthy increase and new contract with, um. An annual escalation clause, I'm working on, um, obtaining a, a set, um. Amount toward equipment replacement, um, that will be part of that contract. And what was the third thing?
Increase in operating cost. Um. By population too.
Yeah, it's based on population and number of calls, so we're, we're working on that. Oh, the one thing we're giving them is, is a, an opportunity to send a liaison from the township. To the first responder meetings.
I think that's good.
So, yeah.
I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I mean, we're gonna have to look at our budgets, see if we're gonna, what we can afford, I mean. It's great if they will order a new truck, but we don't have a budget even set for it next year.
I have a. I have a tentative verbal agreement, um. That, I, again, I will just tell you, it's, it's a healthy increase. Commitment, based on, um, the proposed budget coming out of. First responders for going from thirty-one this year to, I think, eighty-three. Ball, ballpark next year, so.
We gotta figure out a budget, I mean, we're, we gotta, we gotta get together and do a budget, so we know, I mean, we can't. Presume, you can say it's healthy, but we don't know. What it is until we. Go over a budget.
Have you looked at financing part of this, if we wanted to finance it, so it isn't like dropping fifty grand out of the city?
Uh, yes, so, uh, Dan sent a couple options that we, one we had used in the past for engine one, uh, to Sonny, so she's got that information. Um, there's also, I've got a, a list of them, like every, either, either of these manufacturers are gonna. Give you a list of who they worked with before, so, you know, being the, you know, tax exempt. Give you a list of who they work with for, so, you know, being the, you know, tax exempt, um, you know. Uh, loans that we can get will have a lower interest rate than, say, a consumer loan. Um, which is good, um, and assuming that our credit rating is good. Um, and you can go for, uh, with, you know, one, two, three, five, seven, ten year.
I mean, yeah, I mean, even if we we did a little bit longer and paid it off sooner too, there's something when we when we come to that, but. Please be able to move ahead with with doing this and doing it, so we can fit it into a budget. Should find out the interest rate, what kind of interest you can get right now. Then he's got all that information.
There is a possibility of using, um, capital investment, excuse me, capital improvement funds. Which, um. Right now, we're. I think we're thinking about, maybe it's in the hundred and twenty thousand dollar range, hundred and fifteen, something like that. So one option could be is to use that fund towards the purchase, outright purchase. Um, the money's there. So in the past, we've talked about being designated for. Fire equipment. First responders and vehicle, that type of thing, so that would be, um. No interest, a good use of that money. And, um, stay for it outright, not have to worry about interest. And. That's what the money was set there for, now, we can. Talk about a fire truck and that's, or tanker, maybe before a fire truck, but tankers is down the road possibly. But, um. Let's not say we can't work towards. That project is the next thing several years out or whatever the case may be for tankers.
Yeah, no, that we had turned around and and, uh, in the meeting that there was amongst us, we had talked about, um, used tankers. That are out there, that that was a whole lot more reasonable and and they're available right away, you don't have to wait. Two or three years to be able to turn around to get it, and I think that that made more sense on the tanker. Looking that direction next, and I think we could.
Right, tanker, perfect, tanker would be related for tankers as well, because tanker market out there, there's just nothing out there. Um, people like to hang on to their tankers apparently.
Well, we saw stuff that was online, so.
But the engine, the new, the new replacement for engine two, there is plenty of used engines out there.
Yeah, but those are a little bit more expensive than tanks.
Fifty a tanker is about three hundred.
But new.
Yeah.
I mean, we looked at some that were pretty reasonable that we saw, that might come back up on other things too, so. I'm just looking for a way to to get the equipment that we need at a reasonable cost.
No doubt. With the ninety some calls you've had this year.
We've had, first responders have had. Over a hundred, I think we're over a hundred and ten already, something like that.
That is the most used vehicle that comes out of the fire hall.
Yes, absolutely, because and it comes out for every fire too. So, you know, when we had the Hayvale fire the other night, first response was out there too, so rescue one without. So, yeah, it's the most used. I would have you guys to finance it or figure out how you wanna, how you want to, you know, to purchase it, but I would really like to go ahead to sign. Something so we can get this rolling, because it's, you know, how many months out to get the chassis and then.
Right. I'll make a motion. Okay, to approve. What you think is the best, if it's a Ford, you like with what you got, okay? To move ahead and and possibility of paying that with with C I P funds.
Second.
You want, I'm sorry, did you want to put a cap on it up to?
Um, well, I was just looking if we need an extra five that's in there to be able to finish up fitting it the right way. Um, to put that in also on top of it, so you're looking at what, ninety nine plus five? Okay, so that'll give you, let's put a hundred and five thousand, I'll give you an extra thousand.
Okay.
We did that. How we wrote that down? I think Jim Richards.
Thank you.
And I would have to sign it, just, you know.
Yeah.
So the Ford will come from. Midway?
So the Ford might come from midway, it might come from Rochester Ford, um, they hit that, if they hit that price. So we're looking at that. At, um, X L T, one on the bottom, the fifty six, eight, eight six. I'm sorry, which one? The bottom line, uh, I think, yeah. Boyer Ford, yeah, Boyer Ford. So, we check with them, see if they've got it, um, I think we would, I would like to look at the local, um, Ford's. For dealerships to see if they can hit that price, and if they can. Then you'll do. You probably shop local.
Any other comments? Seen done, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. What was same sign?
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And that's approved?
I think I did worry about budget. Thank you, I think you guys are well deserved.
Next item is, uh. Your separations, E D A. Commander, uh, there's a, um. Your package starts on page fifty two, we have. Better. Pogus twenty second meeting. Um. We talked about, uh, progressing forward with our E D A. And, um, so part of that, we'll be discussing this next Monday. No, Tuesday night? Because our E D A Monday meeting, so we've asked Sita, Chris Eaton, to come back with some. Uh, information for the E D A to discuss about how we're gonna move forward with. Uh, not only our planning facilitation. On page fifty three and fifty four. But also on page fifty four about how they would support, uh, the E D A. Um, his recommendation is to, uh, in the middle of that second paragraph. Of the one day per week contract. And to include. Items A through I, this is all what we'll be discussing at our meeting next week. So it's really. The three sessions of strategic planning that we'll be going through between now and, um. End of the year. Put in a couple. Side comments to what we discussed, uh, the E D A is agreement that we need to be data based and, um. Part of the discussion is. First of all, getting awareness to the city about having an E D A of our community engagement. Um, how do we work with landowners? Branding of or local, uh, we think that's a good timely, something to consider over the next year or so, that that we want to keep that on the board. So we want to develop focus groups, listening sessions with the different groups of, um. Residents, businesses, um. Just really concentrate on getting data that helps support some of the direction of the E D A. We want to develop areas of expertise in finance, promotion, marketing, infrastructure. Um, which is all aspects of our E D A makeup. But more importantly, we want to have a common vision for the council, E D A and P N Z. We want to work with our age friendly community. Um, same time, we also want to, we're just new to the game of E D A, and so what are other cities doing for budgets? Uh, some of them have been very mature, thirty, forty years, and so we're starting out, so. We have a lot of work to do and, uh, we want to make sure it's done right. But again, we're talking about data surveys, focus groups, community engagement. Witching coverage is, which would be part of a, uh, a S D V O T SWAT. Analyst of strength, weakness, opportunity and threat. That's a very high level summary, but you'll be hearing more about how we progress through this planning and and, um. Facilitation, last item is just at the bottom of page fifty four. There's some dollar figures there. And, uh, Sita runs on a one July to thirty June. Um, budget year. Wonder if I, Sonny, please correct me if I misspoke in the speaker, but. For the twenty twenty three annual seat is twenty nine thousand one fifty to support this one person, eight hours every week. You you split that out to the balance of. Calendar year from now to December on our budgets, it's like eleven thousand dollars. And then from June or January to the end of June for twenty twenty four, which is still a twenty three budget, it's almost nineteen thousand, so.
So what are we paying per hour for that?
Ninety five.
Ninety five?
I think it's, uh, whether back on trade fifty three, I would just have one question to ninety eight twenty five. Um, and the one that we did when we were looking at this last year, and we kind of put it on hold. Were we looking at a half a day a week? Is that what we were looking at originally?
Yeah, one person every two days, maybe two weeks.
Yeah, so I was just, I I mean, I can see the difference on adding an extra, you're looking at one person a day per week. Or eight hours or whatever that's going on, so, um, is, so the cost basically. We're gonna fit in line for next year if we're at at what, nineteen instead of thirty for the first six months, is that what it was, but? Because we gotta finish.
The nineteen years, eighteen, eight, sixty four.
Okay, so we're looking at basically then about thirty eight thousand dollars a year, is that what it is?
Uh, the fifteen and nineteen, if you split the thirty thousand. For twenty twenty four, Sita annual is thirty thousand six hundred.
So that's gonna cover.
Fifteen.
Okay.
Fifteen and nineteen, so it's thirty four thousand, so. We may have to readjust our budget.
Yeah, but we were looking at twenty nine is what we had budgeted for this year. Right?
Um, I don't know what that figure is.
No, it wasn't that high, but, um.
Again, this is all.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm not negative, I was just, just kind of looking at the difference on what's going on, I know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. To get us up to speed, you know, when a lot of these things take some time, probably you're trying to get from the, from the community.
Well, that's. And I think that's what Sita is looking at, this one day per week is to to get us engaged versus. Two days a month.
Okay, now, if we do that, were they also gonna be helping us with some grants and and different things that way that would be over and above this?
Um, I don't know that specifically, but they do help for grant writing, yeah. I don't know if that's included or how they work out within.
Because because one day a week should give plenty of time for somebody to be doing some grant writing and some of those, I'd like to have that included if we could.
Right, and and it's not all, um. I don't anticipate that that you would see a person necessarily sitting at a desk. All that time in here, because part of it's going to be, um. Connections, right? And and doing that whole network.
But I I mean, I'd just like to have that, because I think that's one thing we're missing with the city. Is looking at some of these grants that are out there, and we have no way to address them and to find them, and I think the more we can do. More it's gonna save the city in all kinds of areas that we have.
Well, and and the largest piece is going to be the. The human. Resource piece of it, the writing it, the actual, because, I mean, I see opportunities come available all the time, I mean.
And that's what I was sort of taking advantage of, because I think we can. It's out there, let's go for it.
I think in the, um, current budget, we only had like, I want to say fifteen or eighteen, maybe sixteen, fifteen, sixteen. Perhaps.
Could you?
That was four.
Could we put that budget writing in there and and I as a J, too? You know, budget writing that there is on page fifty four?
Oh, add G?
Yeah.
Not budget writing, grant writing?
Grant writing, sorry.
All right, so, um. Twenty thousand, but level overlooked.
And that's why, you know, we we wanted to, in transparency, we wanted to make sure that you saw this as well, because it'll be covered. But it, uh, will be driven a bit by what the E D A actually wants, and that's a good suggestion that it be included. Thank you.
All right. Planning and zoning.
I'm gonna sneak up. Let's.
Yeah, Joe. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
So we have, uh, we could jump down to, um. F Y I on the R F P for planning and land use regulations update.
That was page eighty three.
What page are you on?
Hello, I was wondering. At the council level, we haven't heard much about this. Share with council.
Well, I mean, I'll be honest, I I missed the last meeting. I was at the last one when you were going over some of the stuff. Yeah, my, you kind of help with with this because I wasn't.
So. And Sonny, I'll ask you to tag on this, so the R F P, um. The rough was completed, I think we talked about this before, the rough was completed, or the initial was, uh. Completed by Kathy and Wendy, and then, um, so Sonny made some changes. Would as well. And then it was posted. Um. And and then, I think there, should we see if it's got there as well, but anyway, Sonny, do you want to talk about where this is posted? And and give an update on it to the council, we'll do a better.
Hey, I D.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, we started, you'll remember like back in, uh. Oh, it's supposed to tell you, I'm sorry, I should include my. Memo, um, to planning and zoning, let me see if I can pull it up. Uh, after you can see if you can pull up planning and zoning's.
Well, were there seven?
There was a memo in there, oh, okay, so there was, it was posted on our website, it was posted on the League's. Website, uh. From, they have a marketplace where, uh, our agencies can get posted, and, um. We got one inquiry from that posting. Um, and then I also had sent it to, um, six. Um, vendors that were listed on the League's site. And then by personal invitation of people I've known. Uh, past experience that went to another six. So. In all, it was distributed to thirteen.
And we have heard from, what'd you say, seven?
Uh, as of the last planning and zoning meeting, I'd heard from two.
Oh. Yeah, okay. Something. Summary closely, so, okay. So, and and one thing I will bring.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, the number seven comes from, I had initially invited to six personally, and then I added seven.
That's right.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Yep.
But so fourteen total.
Okay. And one, one thing I will ask on this one is if, that we include Wendy as chair. Um, in the responses for the, um, the contract administration, so Wendy is aware of what's what's coming back, so she can be C C as well. Um, in the responses for the um, the contract administration, so Wendy is aware of what's what's coming back, so she can be CC'd as well. Any questions on the RFP? So hopefully we. Get responses back, and I think next is interview, right?
Well, next is, um. We have, I have to post responses.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as with twenty seconds. And then, uh, we're gonna make, so that calendar is on the, on page ninety.
Yeah.
And no. Other than the distribution date. Going to August twenty-eighth, none of those dates were changed. From what? You remember? Last year, we talked about an RFP, but it was a very stripped-down one just for planning services, and then it became a broader kind of. Looking at our entire code and. Doing that, and in May, I think it was May, I took a redline copy to planning and zoning, um. And then, um. Yeah, and then that went to, um. When Kathy volunteered and then. She and Wendy worked together to 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 uh. Fill in those redlined blanks and make some adjustments, and. It came back to me and I made. Some additional adjustments, identifying that it comes from the city, but not necessarily the. Um, planning and zoning commission.
So the submissions. Um, is still scheduled for October second?
Yes.
And these fourteen. Companies that you went out to, that was all sent out on August twenty-eighth, right?
Yes. Well, the one I added was later than that.
That's what I had for our notice. Of the meeting. Posted RFP on eight twenty-two.
That was the goal, yes. Remember, that's when I had my migraine that weekend. So it got shifted, but, yeah.
The submission thirty-one ten-two. Interview should begin on ten-nine. Recommendations to the council for approval on ten-seventeen. At the council meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, and there, um, there again, that's. One of those months like this one where there's such a tight turnaround between planning and zoning and. Council, it's. Yeah.
Now, I got a couple of questions on page eighty-six. We have a committee, does that kind of identify who that is?
Um, yeah.
And your question is what, round?
Of who is the selection committee? Is that been determined?
Yeah.
From planning and zoning and city staff.
Yeah, I I believe. We agreed that it would be planning and zoning.
The whole committee?
Oh, so it's not a subcommittee. It's the entire commission.
Yeah, I think that's what everyone wanted.
Yeah, so that everybody's aware of what's going on, yeah. Cause we all worked on this as we put it together. When they did, it wasn't just, you know, a subcommittee that put it together and then went. I mean, we all worked on that that night on what was going on and reviewing everything that we did, which was not last meeting, but the meeting before.
This is the language. That was in there.
Yeah, except we didn't have city staff. I don't believe that was in there. We just have planning and zoning commission.
Yeah, but that's. That's normal for a city staff to be involved in that, you know.
So on page eighty-nine, second question.
So I just, I mean, that's a good point, if I can take back just to that, so it's, there is no subcommittee. Um, reviewing reviewing these. That's that's not gonna tie into. The timeframe. Because, um. Because your next, um, full planning and zoning meeting isn't until October twelfth.
Well, yeah, we need to have a special meeting every week or probably seven.
Have you don't?
We had interviews the week of October nine.
Yeah, but that's, those interviews are based on the subcommittee having. Reviewed and.
We don't have it set down as a subcommittee. We hadn't set that down, so if we're gonna do that, we'll have to go back and. Go back to P and Z and. Try to organize a subcommittee, or we go through and and do it as a as the full P and Z.
I don't know. Hold allows. Planning and zoning to call a special meeting between. Their meetings. You know what I'm saying? I mean, they would have to be the ones to schedule a s- a special meeting, but if they.
Right.
They just had their meeting last week and they don't meet again until October.
Well, the open meeting law applies to all subordinate, i- anything that requires a meeting notice, so. Like, you're normally noticing the regular meetings of the planning commission, right, dropped into the public?
Right.
So they are subject to the open meeting law, so they can.
But those are pre-scheduled, the second.
You can still do another one.
But just just like the city council, any anybody that's subject to the open meeting law can use all of those statutes, the emergency meeting, the special meeting, the whatever. And why can't they do, I don't, why can't planning and zoning do a special meeting? I don't understand.
Who would call it?
Sure, well, yeah, I mean, however, you notice the. I mean, you you can notice the meeting, right? I mean, do they need to formally, I mean, when you when you do a council meeting.
They agree on a date?
Well, 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 right, I mean, when you do a council meeting, like, if something comes up after the council meeting, but before the next council meeting. Obviously, the council, the council can't vote to establish a date and decide to do a special meeting, because they need a special meeting to do that.
Right, that's where I'm going with this.
Right, so you just do it, you just notice it, and typically, I think they just send an email out. I mean, I've seen these emails that go out and. Well, you know, these are the three dates, let me know if it works, and and we just. Yeah, you can, you can schedule a special meeting of the. Planning Commission or the. Heartboard or whatever, you know. Just like any other body, but, yeah, you gotta notice it though, so you would have to post a notice, obviously, you still look. Questioning.
I, well.
Your question.
No, because because a special meeting. Or council, like, on this agenda, I'm asking them to set a special meeting.
Right.
But that's a decision they need to make.
But what if, what if? Council member Richards, after tonight's meeting, council member Richards resigns tomorrow? And then how do you fill that vacancy and you wanna fill the vacancy? How can you set a special meeting to do that? How can you set a meeting to send a meeting?
The code allows for the mayor or two council people. To call a special meeting.
I thi- I mean, honestly, I think you could call a special meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think you can call a special meeting by posting notice, pro- properly posting notice of the special meeting.
Hmm.
Um. Now, you're right, nobody might show up if you don't clear with them at a time.
No, you wanna have at least a quorum to be able to do it, so you're gonna wanna do it, so they can talk to whoever they want to, so. If P and Z wants to talk to their members that are at P and Z and find out which will work, then all they have to do is contact you. And say, okay, five days' notice, this is what we wanna have for a special meeting.
Yeah, so we'll.
I mean, that's, it'll be real simple, you know, so.
Email. Yeah.
Yeah, however you wanna do it, yeah. Again, it's, we're not council where we have to worry about quorums much with that. And they're calling directly to, if somebody is calling each individual. Person to see which will work for them, that's not setting a quorum that there is to try to find a date or a time that would work.
So it's in thirteen D point O one. Meetings must be open to the public, and it says this, all meetings, including executive sessions, must be open to the public. A of a state agent, state agency board, commission or department. B of a governing body of a school district, count, town, county, school, city, charter city, home rule city. Or C of any committee, subcommittee, board, department or commission, which that would be. So that, that this basically says the open meeting law applies to the planning and zoning commission.
Right.
And then.
So they can't talk amongst each other to establish it. Uh, yeah, if I send an an email out asking people to reply to me.
Correct, you just say, don't, don't reply all. Yeah, these are names available. So I said this ten times to all of you, you just don't reply all, you just. Or you write them like, send me an email directly, don't discuss it amongst yourselves.
Right. Okay, great.
Sunny, come on.
Yeah.
Well, now you know why I'm I'm wanting Thursday and Friday off, because I just.
Okay, so on page eighty-nine. General expectation of services, which starts in the bottom of eighty-eight. Uh, there's a bullet point that says. Acknowledge the accessibility of public city water and sewer utilities and address how wind will impact their property. As the services are faced into the community. What exactly does that mean?
Um, which are planning and land use regulations, is that what you're looking at?
No, the very top.
It's the very. The first one, really, twenty-eighty-nine.
So the reason for us that, because. Today, our city engineer supplies that information. So are you asking? Another engineering company to?
No, and and again, we're we're looking at, um, it'd be working with our current engineering. We're not trying to get rid of our engineering. Group that there is because of.
Okay, so I. Better than given that, making sure that information is available then.
Yeah, cause what we're looking at is is as the city grows. Okay, and you wanna turn around and have codes that are gonna be acceptable to anything new that's going in, and like, what we had today with. Was the problem with with that, but just. Having that interaction, so no, we're not trying to get rid of that.
And I think, yeah, so it's understanding what's what's the process, the phases. And and where is it available and when will it be available?
Cause it's gonna also probably working with what you have with with EDA, the CETA two on the same thing, but to have all of these working together.
Well, if if I. Could speak to that, cause the RFP does allow for, um. With regard to this project, which is different than the phase one A project, which is clearly STANTEX. But with regard to looking at the code and developing that, there there. There is provision for, um, a STANTEX that offers both planning and engineering. Um, to reply to this. And cover both, um, there's opportunity for, um, an engineering firm and a planning firm to partner up. And and address the issues that are part of this, but phase one A, and that is all, that's all STANTEX. So, and much the same as, apart from this, STANTEX, Phil Carlson, the planner, is still doing the day-to-day. Um, application processing that we're. We're doing this. This is a standalone kind of.
Okay, so that.
Project-based, if you will.
Reading the next paragraph, scope of services, I just. That was. I guess what you just explained kinda helps. That, uh, third sentence for engineering and all other professional services. Necessary to complete this project, it's described, will be cited in the proposal. It's coming from the same consulting firm or has a. Operating partner to be considered by the city or as contracted by the city under a separate RFP contract. And then it says the city will provide staffing data as indicated, so others. Yeah, I just was confused by it.
So going back to Sunny's point, I just have to credit her a little bit. I did read the city code. I think you were referring to the city code. Right?
Right.
Where it says, it says this, the mayor or any two members of the council may call a special meeting. So if two members of the council wanna call a special meeting, they can do it without the administrator. You would have to still publish the notice.
I would still have to.
This doesn't have anything to do with planning commission, though.
That's what I'm saying, there's no provision like that for planning and zoning.
And it also says may. It doesn't mean that's the only way a special meeting can be called, it just means that they may do that, but you may also do it.
Oh, okay.
Uh, okay, sorry about that, Sunny. I didn't, I didn't mean to come down there, I feel bad now.
Join the club, it doesn't. Thank you, financial.
So the last comment is on page ninety-two. The contract award. That the city commission believe it would be in their best interest. It may enter into negotiations with any of the firms until a contract some can be finalized with a successful candidate. So was that, uh, apologize, if I use the wrong word, but is that turned into a bidding war then? Three companies? That solicit proposals?
I I don't think we are looking for bidding more, um. Think we were looking saying, let's say that we go with with company A. And we we work with company A for a while, and all of a sudden, it's not working out with company A, and we wanna go with company B. To be able to have that ability then to go over and move to company B. So, I if I remember how we were negotiating that at that time. So, you know, it would give us a chance that it just wasn't one, and all of a sudden, everybody else is out if it didn't work with the one that we picked.
Th- this is for a professional services contract, right? You're hiring a company to give you, like a lawyer, give you advice. Yeah, so that's not subject to the competitive bidding law, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I just did.
It's not, you you don't have to take the lowest responsible bidder or anything like that. It's a professional services are excluded from that whole law, so you could. I don't know, I mean, I've been kind of following this, it's kind of complicated, but if you bid, like, some people are gonna bid it for both services. And then others will just bid the planning service, is that what you're saying, basically?
Yeah, cause they could partner up, one does this, one does.
Correct, so it's not apples to apples, but you could look at A through, you know, A through. J proposals, and you could, you don't have to pick the cheapest one, you could pick. The one you want. So, and it's not a bidding war, it's just, I think the point of it is to get competition to, usually the point of it is to get competition and try and get the lowest price you can. Um, or C, you know. Give competition in the marketplace to drive the price down a bit.
Okay.
Um, that's most, most of the time, other times it's just to see who else will bid and what other people can do at A, you know.
And in essence, to be able to. Negotiate with multiple companies. That you're not locked into. Well, and we did wanna. Move it on.
All right, well, we'll, uh. See how it goes and. Worked out, I guess, uh. Well, going forward then, uh, we have a. Unless there's any other comments on the RFP. We have a resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. About approving a CUP for home business. Make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, so. Any comments?
And that's, and that's based on the. I think there are a couple of things that we need to verify. In that one.
Right, there are.
The the square footage and how much.
Yeah, they gotta come back with that, right, okay, so.
Well, you're adopting it, you're adopting it based on those five, and those conditions, so if it's not met, then.
Yep.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other comments?
No, we gotta go by vote on that, though, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the voice vote.
Mayor Acorst.
Hi.
Counselor Phillips.
Hi.
Counselor, oops, Counselor Burton is absent. Counselor Richards.
I.
Counselor Cruz.
All right.
Thank you.
Twenty-nine, twenty-three to twenty-five.
At page ninety-seven.
Developing a ordinance. For developing of our interim use permit. Did you make a motion?
No, I'll make a motion, then we accept and, and draft. Uh, twenty. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty.
Five.
Twenty-five. Okay, as a conditional use permit.
Nope.
Sorry, it's not a conditional use permit, it's an interim. And in doing that, you're adopting also the ordinance. That goes with that.
Yep, twenty.
Thank you.
Twenty-three dash twenty-three.
Yes.
Which is a good thing.
Phil said you need to put one of those in, and it's like, yeah, it makes sense, okay, you got some timelines you can deal with.
Mayor Acorst, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Counselor Phillips. Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Counselor Cruz.
All right.
Is a, uh. Resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-six approving ordinance. Twenty twenty-three dash oh four, amending Orinoco Public Utility Code regarding time to connection to municipal water and sewer.
That's a page one oh one.
I may, I may go, go ahead. And make a motion that, um. We accept, uh.
You adopt resolution.
Utility code amendment. Uh, section fifty-one, point oh two one, A and B.
You're adopting resolution twenty. Dash twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six. Which is adopting ordinance. Number, ordinance amendment twenty twenty-three dash oh four.
Okay, you got it, okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate the water and sewer. Sent this over to P and Z to review to, um. Water trials. Okay, it was a sewer. Certification, well, the sewer's okay.
There was a water there.
It was the water.
Yeah. And it went back to July thirty-first of the twenty-fourteen. Was, was the old one.
Before, right?
Yeah, it was five years or whatever, yeah.
So the one comment I would say is that, we talked about this in water and sewer through the, throughout the year. Is the, um, alignment period of the one-year. Uh, connection. And, um. I, I'd have a concern about that, uh, timeframe, which is one construction season for. Over two hundred. Two hundred and twenty minus eighty-three grinder stations, actually, it's like a hundred. Hundred and twenty or so gravity systems that have to be hooked up. And one construction season, which is. Basically, April, May through October. And, uh, I think that's gonna be a challenge for residents, um. We heard in our public hearings about, uh, being able to save up for. Hooking up their systems. As well as decommissioning. Same time, there is gonna be some funding. Not a lot of funding from the Old City County. As far as helping with the, uh, cost of decommissioning, which is good. But, uh. I know we need users. And, um, which is the case, it's different than the water system, uh, we had a small investment there. Then here we have a relatively large investment. For the plant and infrastructure, and at the same time, trying to balance. Residents and helping with them connect in that summer timeframe, I think is, is gonna be a challenge. So I would. Like to offer a friendly amendment. I will. To, uh. Replace the one year with twenty-four months. From start of operation of the plant.
Uh, and is that as a discussion or, or just?
Well, it's a, it's a proposed amendment, and we can discuss it if you'll accept it.
Uh, I'm not gonna accept it, but I'll discuss it because we went through everything with water and sewer over months. And, and it was a unanimous decision with water and sewer to do it for one year. Instead of the twenty-four months. Uh, my situation would be if, if we run into a situation that we can't get it done. People can come in and ask for variance that there is to be able to vary that off and, and ask for an extension at that time. This would put it in at least, uh, the direction of where the city wants to go to get that hooked up.
Who's gonna give you a? Who's gonna decide if you get variant to that? I mean. A lot of expense for the people.
Well, I mean. We're back again to square one with the twenty-four months, okay, and so that's, that, and I think we need to. To look at a lot of other things go along, so I don't, I, I can't go with the friendly amendment with that. Without reviewing again through water and sewer and see what they say about it, cause they're the ones that came up with that first place for going to one year. Cause if you do it for twenty-four months, everybody's gonna wait till the last part, and it's gonna be twenty-three months and then they'll, they'll hook up. And I think this pushes people to get hooked up, but I think a lot of people want their yards back again, you know?
They, they want to get away from their sewers too, from the individual ones, we heard that too in hearing.
People wanna get their yards back, they'll wanna get their yards, they'll hook up, but some people just can't, some people ain't. More of a golden spoon.
Well, we're not that, we, we've offered options that are for anybody that has financial problems, and we gave them those options. And they're available. So there's financial funds that we worked through off of that, so we've given that and those are available. So if they need help, they can get help, you know what I mean? We turn around and ask, I think that there was only one person that filled out.
Some people are a little, a little more proud of themselves than to come in and ask for it, you know?
You don't accept it, you don't discuss it.
I don't, yeah.
There's always possibilities of, um. Going back later to. Any other discussions about the motion?
Mayor Acorst.
Hi.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Counselor Cruz.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, um. Public hearing. Public hearing for. Consider cannabis-related moratorium for study and other provisions. We're looking at it on October council meeting or November council meetings.
One thing, I just wanna point out to that so everyone understands, one thing that we did discuss. Um, with that is also putting together, uh, Orinoco's own ordinance. Uh, for smoking. Cause right now, I think we go with the states, right?
The state regulates interior inside, yeah.
And we really don't have one for Orinoco. Um, in terms of smoking on city property. Whether it be cannabis or vaping or whatever it is.
So I, I actually waited to talk about that, so.
Yeah, cause you're on page one oh five.
It's okay, I can just talk about. So.
Well, there are three.
What's the third one? That, I mean, the, the moratorium and.
Cannabis in public and then.
Yeah, cigarettes. It'd be, okay, so on the smoking issue, yes, you can adopt an ordinance to prohibit. Um, smoking or vaping, and we've drafted multiple model ordinances to do that. Um, I guess I just, before, we can bring it back next meeting in October, I just want some direction. As to the extent that you wanna go, I mean, you don't have to vote tonight, but just maybe some general direction, so. One of the samples that I drafted is extremely all encompassing, basically bans smoking or vaping. Anywhere in the public right of way, like streets, sidewalks, parks. Anyway, I mean, it's, I can reach you, the public place means. Public place means any property generally open or accessible to the public and property owned, leased or controlled by a government unit, including but not limited to any street, highway, sidewalk. Alley, public park, school grounds, public areas, public buildings. Parking lot and any other property owned, managed or controlled by the city. Public place shall not include, one, private residence, including the person's curtilage, which is basically their yard immediately adjacent to their house. Two, private property not generally accessible by the public. Unless the person is explicitly prohibited from consuming cannabis flower, cannabis products, lower potency hemp edibles, right? Edible drive, consumer products on the property of the owner. And three, the premises of an establishment or event licensed. To permit on-site consumption, that Sunny asked that about Gold Rush, because she was saying that people smoke cigarettes during Gold Rush. And if you transfer the ownership of the Gold Rush Corporation to its own entity. The way you, you're gonna do that in the future is just have a license agreement with that entity, so you'll license them this much space to hold the event. And then we will set the rules in the agreement for what they can and can't do in that area. And, and, you know, like, for example, at the, the one that went on to the Steamboat Days. They allow drinking alcohol, but only in the beer tent area, and they actually have a map. Where it's cordoned off, and the rules of the agreement say you can drink it there between these hours, but you can't bring it. Containers outside of that area, you gotta clean up, basically. Um, and, and it has a bunch of other conditions, and you can set, and what we'll do is draft a template, and then we'll just use the same agreement each year. And tweak it each year a little bit, you know, cause things change, so that, that'll address. That's what that means by licensed, when you license, or if you, for example, if you license up. I don't think you would ever do this, but if somebody had a wedding. Like at the River Park or whatever, and they wanted to rent the whole park out for their wedding. The city might add, if you wanted to do that, would enter into a license agreement for that event, and. Yeah, but, but absent that, they wouldn't, in this option, you wouldn't be able to smoke it, vape it. That's cannabis flowers I'm talking about, anywhere, you know, anywhere in the city that's public. So that's kinda like the extreme option, I think that's a good option, just because. It's easy to enforce for the police and realistically. You know, I, I mean, it's up to you, if you wanna have people smoking joints out of the street, then that's fine, um, but, but, you know, and that's. And some cities will wanna do that, by the way, I mean, some cities won't want it, regulate this, in fact, we've had. Some disagreement over that, and so we drafted option, option B. And option B would have to take where you would limit. Um, and I'm not gonna read this, cause it's specific to each city, and they, some of them are wanting. You know, a little bit looser regulations, like. They're not prohibiting it in parks, but they're prohibiting, prohibiting within, within fifty feet of a playground. And they're getting super specific and detailed like that about the area, you know, so it's kind of a patchwork of where you can and can't use it, so. Does the council have any, I know Dana's not here, she probably has an opinion on it, but. Does anybody have an opinion about if, if those two options were on a table, what you would pick? Or do you not wanna regulate it at all, you don't have to do an ordinance? If you don't do an ordinance, I mean, August first, people could possess cannabis, I don't know if there's been smoking in the parks. I was kinda wanting to, if the police officer is here to ask if they had had any complaints about it, but. So what are the thoughts on that issue, or no thoughts at all?
Well, I think we need to have an ordinance for no question about it, and, and to be going to where we were back to January of twenty twenty-five. Till we get more direction from the state of everything that's going on, right?
Yeah, that's, well, that's a separate issue, I'll talk about that in a minute.
Okay.
So that, that deals with sales, but this is just like going forward forever, you know, do you wanna look at it people from?
Yeah, and I don't think we were gonna, I guess I didn't understand we were gonna vote on that tonight.
No, we're not voting, I'm just wanting direction from you as to what, cause I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is go draft something. And I wanna draft something if you don't want me to draft it, and then you gotta redraft it. So do you want like to ban, I mean, I think many cities, most cities are gonna be doing an ordinance.
Yeah, and publicly, public property, you know, that's where I would, would say for public property.
I'm sorry. The action really is more about, um. Setting the public hearing.
Yeah.
Because statutory, um.
I'm just.
We don't want to run out, and I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm just good covering all three issues at once.
Right.
Um, so. Yeah, so in terms of the public hearing, the, the statute. Um, the statute. So the statute for the moratorium on sales that was approved by planning and zoning, that the statute, the specific statute that that is. Authorizes you to do that, says the governing body has to hold a public hearing. Which is you, so we, but the good thing is nobody can really sell it yet anyway. Um, so it doesn't really matter if we do it now or next month, it is irrelevant, so what I'm recommending you do is hold a public hearing. Whenever, and then adopt the interim, the interim ordinance, which many cities have done, I mean, I drafted that, it's. You know, it's not, that's a non-event to me, I mean, that's a no-brainer to me, I mean, you just. Like, uh, Jim was saying, the state's gonna do a model ordinance. In conjunction with the Office of Cannabis Management in the lead Minnesota cities and other county attorneys association and other groups. And so what most cities are gonna do is wait until that is drafted and then use that to draft your ordinance, so that. I would just set the public hearing whenever, and then next month, whenever they wanna do it, um, so.
Yeah, and I think that's why I said October or November, if, you know, if you wanted to do multiple pieces at once. Or.
Well, I think the smoking in parks is not hard to draft, I mean, I think we can bring that back next month pretty easily. I mean, I've got multiple templates I can use to, to do it, I just, I want some direction, you wanna just an outright ban? And basically, people won't be able to smoke marijuana anywhere? Or do you wanna kind of allow it some places in the public, I guess that's the main. This, this is, Ryland's too old for this, he just can't have it, that's for sure.
Everybody's so excited, but why do we pass the law to let it go on?
I mean, but, but this just limits it to your house, basically, or your house and your yard. Or, or in your car, or, well, no, cause that's on a street, I was like, I suppose if your car's in your driveway, yeah, that's okay, but. Um, yeah, but you're not, that's illegal, you can't do that anyway, um.
I spilled enough of it when I was in the Philippines.
Alright. Okay, it's just in the Philippines, I got it. That's where you smell them, I got it.
So Ryland's not a hundred and five.
You said that, I didn't say that. So what do you think, just ban all parks, all sidewalks?
I think so.
Yeah, and to me, I think that makes.
Then it's not a judgment call where you were standing or.
Yeah, and, and honestly, it's just, to me, it's like public safety issue, like, are you really gonna have kids running around and then people smoking marijuana?
So you're talking about the cannabis piece. Cause there are three and I wanna.
And the other one you were gonna.
We'll go to the cigarettes now, so on cigarette smoke, what were you thinking on that, or what did you want, just an ordinance that?
Yeah, so, um. P and Z. We talked about drafting one up, so we could even draft the first draft and, and give it to you. I'm gonna let you review it. Because that, that, that was basically because we were using the state.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, so create our own smoking ordinance. And, uh, you know, that would include the vaping as well.
You don't have, do you have a smoking ordinance yet?
No.
So, so when this came up, it, for the city of Goodview, they wanted the same thing, they wanted, they already had a smoking ordinance, but they wanted changes to the smoking ordinance to make them parallel with the. Cannabis ordinance.
Right, and, and that's, that's kinda what we're seeing.
And so, I think it's easier, just if I'm doing the cannabis one, I think it's easier just to have me do both and put them in the same ordinance, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Um, I think so, I think, and we'll just basically ban it. Now, I think the difference there is, do you really wanna ban cigarette smoke if somebody's on a public path, or, you know, that might be extreme, so I think there's some discussion there. Right?
Yeah, kids walking up the pass, why not?
Well, and that's, and that's fine, I mean, you can do that, I think, um, I guess I haven't researched that, so in good view, they don't do that, they ban it in parks. It was a parks, but, but they had this, they have a public beach and a public lake, in good view, it's called like, good. It was a parks, but but they had this, they have a public beach and a public lake. In Goodview, it's called like Goodview. Um, and they, they they banned it. Not on the beach, but on the park side of it. And they're like, well, why isn't it banned? Or no, opposite, they banned it on the beach, but not the park. And they were like, well, that's, so you you really wanna ban cigarette smoke? I don't think you wanna ban it on streets. That would mean people can't smoke in their cars.
I think side sidewalks and public.
So why don't I just research it a bit?
Okay.
And um, see, see what we can, how we can ban it. You know, I I'm not even sure that's, that's, that would be to ban it like on. Everywhere might be, I have to research it, but I don't know if any city does that. Maybe they do. Um, but you want some sort of tobacco ordinance that. At least ban smoking in parks and in public buildings or or near public buildings, right?
Exactly. Yeah, cuz our thought was smoking.
So in your experience, have you had, you know, in Rochester, they have designated smoking areas?
Right. You can get real complicated with these smoking spaces. Yeah. That's why, I mean, there might be more research that needs to go into it. I, I mean, cuz some people might say, you might get people here complaining about that and saying, well. Wait a minute, if I go to the park for. The Legion Party or whatever, you know, and they're, you know. And can't they, we just put a cigarette ash thing over there and we can just go smoke over there? You're saying I can't smoke anywhere in the whole public. I mean, you could get people. Upset about that, so. Um, just so you know, do what you want and just point it out.
As we know, we've ran our building out.
Right.
Um, granted, there's no smoking here, but. We wanna alienate people not by not having a designated smoking area.
Right, that's the issue and and. How, well, yeah, in the future, if Gold Rush is a licensing agreement, you could just say, you know, you, you know. Notwithstanding the public ban, you can smoke it in this area or whatever. I I do people really walk around smoking Gold Rush or is that a? That seemed odd to me, but I don't know. Well.
To be honest with you, I haven't seen many people smoke like that this kind of major. But the point is, I think this a lot because of, and maybe Dana has comments too, but I think that's where we can discuss that at the. Well, public hearings.
So I will do, you don't, yeah, you wouldn't need a public hearing for this one. This is not a zoning ordinance. It's just a.
Oh, just the cannabis.
It's just a public consumption use ordinance, which is not, not.
You don't need a.
No, not for a smoking ordinance. Probably should need that.
On any ordinance that you were.
Unless it's in your code. No, there's no statutory hearing that's needed for that unless it's a land use or there's another. Spec, you know, it's only required when statute requires it or your code or charter requires it. So a smoking ordinance wouldn't qualify for that, but. In any event, we can talk about that. Why don't I just put together something?
You still have to publish.
Yeah, you gotta, yeah, we'll work on it and.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. And then we'll do the public hearing of the moratorium or the interim ordinance at the next, at in October.
Okay, October. Okay, let's start on October.
Okay. At six thirty five.
I was talking fast cuz I gotta leave. Can I leave?
No, not.
I'm smoking my car, right?
No, can't.
As far as any preparation that would be put in the packet for us. You mentioned multiple ways of, your earlier comments, I guess.
Yeah.
If they could be um, in a memo or something, just highlight those things, differences.
Well, I'm I'm gonna put the ordinance in there and in the ordinance, it's will speak for itself, but what I tend to do a short memo and say. Like you could.
There's the alternatives.
Designated smoking areas within parks, if you wanted to and. And then also the the other, there's other issues with this, by the way. Um, for example, the gummy, the so-called gummy, low potency hemp edibles. I don't wanna get too much into it tonight, but they, you know, those are governed by a different statute. And then you've got. Medical marijuana too, which has been legal for a long time in Minnesota. And those are governed by a different statute. So the interim ordinance that I put together accepts those. Those things out. So it doesn't cover those. It just covers the cannabis that was just adopted. Um, and then the smoking, the practical reality is you can ban gummies. And I'm suggesting you do that in the parks, but realistically, that's not enforceable. I mean, you know.
But you know, when, yeah.
I mean, it, but it could. I mean, a police officer sees you eat one or something or fall over, you know. You can create facts where you might enforce it. Yeah, so there's issues. We we can talk more about it and then the next meeting, is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair. Let's move on.
But the interim moratorium is just the study piece.
Yep, for the sale.
That's the one that you're.
Yeah, we've already.
Do need a public hearing.
We have, we absolutely have to have a public hearing. That's why we can't adopt it tonight. You have to have a public hearing, so. And we've already drafted that. That should be in the packet. You should have it.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Do we need a motion for that public hearing or not?
No.
Okay. Parks and trails. Personnel uphanging from the stairway chairlift. Um, last week I reached out to the state. Excess review board and they're reviewing it later this week, application, so. They don't meet very often and that's why prompted the inquiry to find out where it's at, so. So, uh, have you heard anything?
Oh, other, other than, um, oh, um, we do have. On the twenty second, we can watch the video.
Oh, of the.
Remember, yeah.
Okay. So we do have funds left that American Rescue Plan funds would still hopefully support that when we get a full. Where you can use that money towards it. It shouldn't be much over. Uh, next item is a staffing update and space utilization. Page one ten.
The chase that I need to. I'm requesting the council authority not only to proceed with and hire the two part-time positions approved last year. But authority to proceed with and hire a third part-time position of accounting clerk. All without having to return for council for approval. Um, what I'd like to do is um. Is kind of post. This time with more um. Skills that will will be utilized by however those. The positions are filled. That makes sense. Get the pool and then determine. Where a person's strength might, might um, excel. Um, and and guide that toward, the person toward that. That role as opposed to trying to um. Collect three different pools of candidates for the three different positions. I'd actually like to collect a pool of candidates that could fill either of the three. Or any of the three position and see where this, where the.
So how would you, how do you, the application reading?
The application, our city application is exactly the same regardless of. Of the position.
Thanks, Mike.
So it's, oh, wait, you're not done. You're not done. I was serious when you said you couldn't leave.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Um.
I can stay around at the time.
Yeah, no.
No, I'm just, you say drawing for a pool, but how do you get people? Of the underlying. All vacations that you're looking for into that pool, so you know you got people coming in.
Right.
That can fill that, so.
Right. So I align, uh, I know. Time, um. Align the basic skills that. I'm sorry.
Oh, I, he's just said something.
So there, there are some basic skills that that I think could be adaptable to. I, any of the three positions. And then. Based on their experience may levitate toward a. You know, if they have more accounting, you know, if they have some basic administrative stuff that that can be utilized in either of the three areas. But then perhaps they have more accounting experience. Um, that would levitate them toward uh, more of an accounting clerk position as opposed to. And again, you know. Mary's resignation came in just last week, so that's unexpected a bit, so um.
You know, the comment that I would make is that um, having a team is is so important when it comes to whatever you're looking at and. And cross-training to me is a very important part of that team. They don't turn around and get stuck when somebody's not there. Um, so I I don't. Think specific areas, it's nice to have somebody that's better at that, but I think. Cross-training is more important than there is with that. Um, also. I'd like to say that I think it's, it's doing. Part-time people and and trying to get people that have that type of experience. For what little we're paying them, they can do better by being a check out clerk that there is at Casey's. And and I think we need to look a little bit more in depth of what there is for what we're offering these people, number one. And cuz if you get somebody that's got some some talent, they're not gonna go for seventeen dollars an hour, okay? And you can't offer them sixteen and expect them to go for seventeen. It won't work.
And if they do, they're not gonna stay.
They're not gonna stay. And that's half of the problem that I have with looking at continual part-time people, okay? You get a full-time person, they're more invested in being in here and sticking with it than it is looking for the next opportunity that there is that comes around. So I think that that. Um, looking and 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 putting out what we need to try to find some people now would be important. But to agree with with two or three, I think that we need to look at this a little bit more in depth. Uh, what makes more sense for the city than just to go along with three part-time people.
Well, and and my, my intent is not that they remain part-time. But it, it is an opportunity to um, allow them to interact with Renee and myself. And and see where those strengths are.
I understand that, but it's it's also when you hire somebody of. If you're looking just as a part-time and that's how you put it in, those are the type of people are gonna be applying for it instead of looking at a full-time. Type situation that there is. And I think finding somebody that's qualified as a good clerk. To to be in to do that, you know, isn't worth investing cuz we lost all the money that we invested in Mary. And she's gone, you know, and so those are the thing.
That could have been, even if she was full-time.
I I understand that, but I don't think she would have walked out if it would have been full-time.
No, Mary said she had to leave. She couldn't afford to stay working the few hours she was getting.
Yeah, and she said she was looking for another part-time job just to support what she had for her other part-time job here. So with with those, it's it's something else that's going on there that I think we need to take a closer look at. To get the right people in the city that are gonna stay in the city.
I agree.
Okay, well, I think that's um. No, I think. I do think you're, we should give you that authority, but at the same time, I think it's important that we recognize the um. The value, I, in my opinion, I think a full-time. Administrative person. Would help. Your workload and allow Renee to continue with what she's doing involved with planning, so. Um, I would like to think you would consider all options. Uh, I think a part-time accounting person is still probably. Probably more appropriate for the workload that we have. Maybe a year from now or two years from now, or maybe a full-time, but I just, I don't think we have. In my, where other cities that have part-time accounting people too versus full-time, but those are more. But anyway. I make a motion, we give. Son of your city administrator, the authority to proceed with hiring and filling these positions and looking at a new accounting clerk of some fashion.
Does it stand here? Um, what's outlined or staying?
I'm, I think we should um. Do whatever, I think we should give her the authority to do whatever she thinks we need to do to make the operation run as successful as possible. It's it's, she's the HR director and I think that's part of her responsibilities.
I will tell you that um, today we were able to, um, I know you're looking for a second.
Yes, there's a second for the motion for further discussion. So a lack of a second is um. Motion is not valid, so.
I'll make a motion that she puts it on the paper for a full-time employee, the office helper.
However.
It's not, it's in the motion, we have to.
No, he said it died for lack of motion.
Carl's making a new motion.
One.
Or if she needs the half one, but but it didn't work with a half one. It didn't work, so we gotta get a full time. And then if we need another half, yeah, that'd be fine. I don't see no problem, but the half one didn't work out.
That's, yeah, I'm sorry. Is there a second?
I second.
So the motion is to hire a full-time.
And if it needed a half of a part-time.
And a part, one and a half people.
Yeah, but needed.
So the one person could be administrative or it could be your project specialist. So you got one and a half authorization to fill. Whatever you think you need to make the operate, to make the office run more.
At least one full-time and the possibility of an additional.
No, this. Uh, just for discussion, because we did prove this already last year. Or two part-time. We only hired one part-time. We never got enough. Allified people, if I think that's correct, to fill a part-time, so.
And I think it's been proven. With with Mary, what happens if we can't pay them?
Mary, well, I can't, I can't.
There, yeah, there are some, yeah, personnel issues that are.
Any other comments? I guess the only comment I would have if if uh. Were successful in hiring a one and a half person, um, there could be another. Uh, reason for her to come back to us again and ask for additional help too. Take that seriously as well. Uh, we got a lot of work ahead of us and. There's so much that our city staff is doing that a normal year is. You can start to fill a whole page while we're doing that. It's not a normal year. And we need to support her with the staff that she needs, so. And we need to support her with the staff that she needs, so. Any other comments?
Um, no, and the only other comment that I was gonna make on the other part of it, um. Uh, for office relocations and acquisition of furniture and equipment, uh, to meet the needs.
Let's vote on this motion.
Okay, that one, I just wanna make sure we separated those two.
No, we're just talking about the hiring, so. No other comments, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same time. Office relocations.
Oh, that's what I was just gonna.
What you'd like to see done there and how to proceed?
Well, um, we did get um the the technology moved down there, so. Um, I can move my computer and phone and. Everything down there and your important connections down there, so, yeah, it just got done today. All day long, right? All day long, just one more hour.
Yeah, just one more hour.
Yeah. So that pieces will, um, and then, um. Yes, then I guess if I move down there, you would move back downstairs. Along with the other full-time person, because the project specialist needs to be downstairs. Okay.
So I guess whatever. So you've been working with Kane to help out whatever public works or.
He's been as busy as the rest of us, right? We kind of have.
Have you talked with Joanne?
Like I say, it just happened today, so uh, they're, and she's, she's. Right, right.
So as far as the furniture and other, is there anything else you need to counsel, so from a dollar figure?
Yeah.
What are we looking at? Any idea?
That part I have not had a chance to, I mean, we're talking, we need some bookcases to divide the space. Um, between Gold Rush and the township, um, you, um.
So we need to, you plan to come back to council with a proposal or funds, we have. Twenty-seven thousand five hundred and R and M for the community center, so.
And we haven't used any of that, right?
That's what the balance is now.
Oh, okay.
It's like five hundred dollars.
I propose that you come back to council with what you come up with. The furniture, because if it's dealing with Gold Rush and dealing with the township. Those are gonna be separate from the city from now on to what there is over in another area.
The the only thing that I'm looking for the city to provide in that space. Is just the bookcases that would divide the space, I'm not looking for furniture for either one.
Come up with a good cost of what that is, so at least we know what it is, that's what you're looking at, so.
Well, there's, there is used, I mean, I shouldn't say that. There are places that sells used furniture.
Oh, absolutely, and I think the mail gets rid of a lot of stuff, I think that's that's there that's available.
So I make a motion, we approve. Uh, Sunny, our city administrator, proceed with. Covering the office, right, uh, relocations and rearrangements and appropriate furniture.
Up to, that's.
Let's let's say up to twenty-five thousand.
It's a lot of furniture for twenty-five grand. I can do my house for twenty-five grand.
No, but that's an assumption, though, that you're you're saying I would spend that all.
I don't think we should give you that much, just twenty-five grand, I don't think we should do that, so. That's why I'd like to turn around and know what you're, what you're getting. I know, we don't have any furniture, there is other uh water and sewer project that there is for Kane for anything that's going on out there either.
What would you suggest?
Brand it priced better.
I'm just asking for what she's gonna gonna spend, I just wanna know what you're gonna spend and what you're getting, that's all, you know, so. I mean, we've got, what, fifteen hundred dollars that you can spend that there is without coming back to to council. Yeah, I mean, you can buy a lot of furniture for office furniture for three thousand dollars, you know, so.
And I'm just saying because there's budget money for it.
Yeah, no, and and I don't, you know, just because there's budget money, I don't think we need to spend all the money.
And approved.
I know, but we can use it next year for something else, I think Kane needs to have another truck or whatever else that way, so.
Yeah, but with all due respect, Councilor Phillips. Kane buying a truck is not gonna come out of the community.
No. No, no, I'm just trying to say, I mean, that's that's a pretty big price tag, I won't, I won't go along with that, I'd go for twenty-five hundred.
You just ask him for a price of what?
Just what you want, that's all, yeah.
Do you have any idea, Sunny?
I I, you know, I. I would, I would say ten thousand is gonna be more than adequate, and I don't even anticipate that. If you haven't figured out by now that I'm really fiscally conservative. I, I'm sorry, and I, and I'm sorry too that. I am feeling such a lack of support for the work that I do and for, uh.
I'll change my motion to up to ten thousand dollars.
I second.
Any other comments? Saying none, all those in favor, say if I could say aye, 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 pose.
I'll go along with that, just to get moving so we can get out of here tonight.
You're voting?
I don't vote.
You're stating? Thank you.
All right. Update on unfinished business. Fifteen third street. The verbal update, I don't think there's anything.
No, there isn't, but I um, I did meet with um the property owner and her friend. Um, and for about an hour. And was very clear with her on what was, what was going to have to happen. Um, and that also that there was a council meeting tonight and um we needed to have a plan. And, oh, there's my third page.
Oh, I'm sorry, hang on, I did it.
Um. And and he stopped in today and um has been up on the roof and has sealed off the hole in the roof. Um, and, um. He's had some issues, health issues as well, so, um, I'm trying to work to find them some. Social services assistance or, you know, some strong bodies to help him get that. That plywood up on the roof so that he can continue to do that, um.
Let me ask, did we do that to the other person? Did we do this? For the other person, I don't wanna mention the name.
That's all before my time, I can't.
The one we. Yeah, did we offer any of this? I think we're going above and beyond.
Yes, I think so too.
We.
I think it's.
That's not part of the city's responsibility to do that stuff.
What did, was there an inspection, Sunny?
We did have the inspection, I did ask for consent to enter the house, um, I did not receive that. I tried to get consent to go on the property, have not received that either. Instead, he's hauling in the plywood and going up on the roof.
So I think what you need to do is have a building official write a report. That details two things, number one, the outside of the property, the grass, because I think most of the complaints of the woman here tonight. Were on the outside, I'm not sure, I mean, the hole in the roof is bad, but I think the junk on the outside, if it was all cleaned up. And you don't need to go to district court to do that, you can probably enforce your ordinance to do that.
But that's not the case anymore either.
Believe me, she's had me up there a couple, three times, it's a junk, it's a hole, it's a.
Sure. So then if you wanna do a hazardous building, you do wanna consider doing hazardous, I wouldn't promise to do it, because you haven't seen the building officials report either. So, but before, so that is the next step, so I asked Sunny to try to get the consent to just go in there. So we wouldn't have to get a warrant, and of course, they didn't give consent.
Right.
So the next step would be to get a cert administrative search warrant, which is not so easy, because you don't have a police force. So the last time I did this for Yoda, we had to physically drive to a judge's house to get it signed, a paper warrant signed. Because we could not file an administrative search warrant without a police force, and the county, Homestead County refused to do it for us. So you're in that position, so it's gonna be a day, I mean, it's gonna be an endeavor to do that, we did it, we successfully got the warrant for Yoda, we inspected the property, but. Um, so that's the next step, and I'd say if you can get a warrant drafted and signed.
Well, that's.
And then, and then, and an inspection done by the next council meeting, you'd be cooking with gas at that point. I mean, that would be a lot, tho- those three steps to do that with.
Well, it is your job to get a warrant.
Yep, but then, but then before you get the warrant, you've gotta arrange your building official, so. And when you get the warrant, you've gotta be ready to go, you can't just, oh, we'll get a warrant, get the warrants, your job, I get the warrant, here you go, sign, here's your warrant. And then you guys sit and do nothing for three weeks, then you gotta get another warrant, because you gotta, you gotta kinda, so it's all gotta be coordinated, you gotta. Get the facts, the updated photos, not the photos Jim provided, but the updated photos, because they've been doing work on the property. And get the updated photos of what it looks like today. Um, send those photos to the building official, see if he can give me information sufficient to get a warrant. I mean, you have to have probable cause to get a warrant, and actually, that's not technically true, you have to have, um. An inspe- administrative search warrant means that you have an administrative provision in your code. That you want to inspect, and if they have a house in town, then you get the warrant. Um, but generally speaking, we would wanna have probable, uh, we probably do here, so we just have to draft the warrant.
And a warrant applicant. New law or what? We didn't need that over when we crucified when the two people in the city all had it against this guy.
Well, in that instance, I mean, with all due respect, in that instance, that was obvious that that place was, I mean.
That place is ten times better than that place up there, ten times better.
He, he, so what happened in that instance was, we litigated that for a year.
Right.
And he kept going back to the judge, making a little bit of progress, I mean, it's, that's the way it is now, when we first started that project out, I mean, nobody. I I don't even think he disputed it, I mean, nobody, it was obvious, it was falling apart.
Go up and look at that one.
Well, I know, but he did that, I mean, by the end of the case, we didn't have to tear it down, because it took him a year to do that, though.
Right.
So we did give him a year, I mean.
Well, they've had seven years up there, and it's time, something that gets done, because I owe it to the neighbors.
And that's fine, we get the warrant, and then once we get the warrant, we arrange with your building officials to go execute the warrant, and tell these people to show up with them key to let us in. And or we're gonna go in, and then you go in, you have the building official do a report, inspect, take photos of the inside, do a report. And then, and then the question will be, depending on what his report says, can you tear it down? So I want, I mean, the city's gonna end up spaying, spending a lot of money on this, uh, just like we did with Tilford.
Yeah, but well, I am worth a lot of money, yeah.
But Tilford was different, because we didn't, we didn't spend as much as we would have had to spend if we would have had to tear it down. So the one we just did in, um. Winona, they ended up spending, I think, eighty thousand, all in with the building officials, that you guys pay out of the city general fund, you pay for this. So you have to be, where I'm gonna be crystal clear, that you pay, and and then you pay, and then you assess, and you probably never get the money back. So as long as you're, we're cool with that, and I always give that disclaimer, because, you know. Everybody wants to clean it up, and they wanna clean things up, but it's expensive to do this, there's a reason we don't do many per year in each city, and that's the reason. Um, but as long as you're good with it, I don't know if it'll cost that much here, and that that one-on-one on had some asbestos issues, frankly, so then you have to. There's issues with that, you gotta go to special landfills, it's expensive, you have to have special people remediate it before you can tear it down. Um, but, so the next step is get the warrant, inspect the property, based on that inspection, if the. Building official believes that it's a hazardous property, then he gives me that report. And then I drafted a resolution, just like we do with Tilford, a resolution declaring it a hazardous property. Bring that to council, we have to give her at least two weeks' notice, maybe three weeks' notice. Bring that to council, get the council to order that, after we order it, we have to serve her with it. By like a, get a sheriff to serve her, and then we gotta give her the terms of the resolution, I'll give her time to fix things, just like we did with the other one, like, usually it's thirty or forty-five days. And we have to wait that time, if she doesn't do it, then we have to file a motion with district court, then you gotta get a hearing with district court, I have to get a hearing with district court, the judge, just like the, that was Tilford. Well, I'm gonna give you another three months, and so the judge is just give more time, and then you wait another three months, it may be a year before, wow, you know, six months, you know? And then there's the winter issue too, so.
We're going to get something started.
Well, that's right, you know, once you get started, it's expensive, and now, it it wouldn't be that much money if they remediate, I mean, if they can go in. And clean the exterior of the property up, and, because the building official, one of the things he does that I I don't know, is he has to render an opinion about what. Actions need to be taken to bring it into a non-hazardous state, and sometimes that's raising it, I mean, that's always, that would bring it into a non-hazardous state in every case. But it might be like, well, in the Tilford one, we have all these things, and he ended up doing all those things, I've never seen somebody do that before, we always tear it down, because it's not. It's kinda like bad man, good money after bad, I think they call it, because it's, you know, you're putting money into something that never been worth that much. But you're asked for, that's the process, i- in a nutshell, that's the process, it takes months, it takes money. You know, we hope you use Sunny's time, but we can do it, I just, what I'm gonna do, though, is before we get the warrant, I'm gonna ask that you. Set up a meeting with me and these people, and I'm gonna talk to them about it to try and avoid the warrant part of it. Um, and then if they still won't let us do it, then we're gonna, we'll get the warrant, um.
But that's still not gonna change the own, you brought up the the value of the property, the property is still gonna remain hers.
Yeah, yeah, the deed will remain with her, but if we tear it down, or, you know, you know, a- and that's the other thing, like, I need to have a discussion with you after we get the inspector's report. About what the remedy is, y- you know, because the only remedy, we're not, we're not hiring contractors, I'm not advising you to do that, to fix up somebody else's house. Um, because that'll just fall into disrepair again, I mean, the only remedy we're gonna do is tear it down. Um, but then, part of that depends on, in a, in a, long story short, you go to the judge, you have to say. Well, the estimated cost of fixing the property up is this. Thirty thousand dollars, the assessed tax value is this, whatever, seventy thousand dollars. And the cost to raise it is fifteen thousand dollars, so it's it's unfair to the city that we have to spend money that we're never gonna get back, you know? You have to make a, you have to make an argument that it's the most economically feasible thing to tear it down, essentially. So, but those are all facts, I can't make.
You don't wanna get a hold of the building inspector first?
Well, no, because we have to set up a time when he can actually inspect, it's like, we can't go inside your house, we can't go inside this woman's house without a warrant, so.
Gotta do, get a warrant.
Warrant, it's what I do, what I've done the last few times we've done this, is I call them and get a time when they're available, like a block of three days. And then we get the warrant, and then we, I write, write in the warrant that this warrant is valid for inspection within this time period. Yeah, we have authority to do it, because there's a issue of staleness, like, you can't just get a warrant three months later, you know, go search, that's not. How it works, I'm just gonna summarize it that way, that's not how it works, so.
Well, go ahead and go for a warrant.
Yeah.
Let me talk to these people, get them nowhere.
Yeah, I haven't talked to them, no.
Yeah, it it to nowhere. Gotta go ahead and go for a warrant.
Well, if you authorize us to do that, we'll move forward as best we can to do that, um.
So why don't we, why don't we consider that after you have your meeting?
I make a motion.
I know, I think we can meet with them like tomorrow or the next day, just over the phone quickly. I think in this case, you, if you authorize us to move forward, and then, so. The first step is to get the building official to go stand in the public right of way and just take photos and get his opinion, I know what you guys think, but. I wanna get his opinion about what he thinks, and he says, well, that, this is. And he says, well, that, this is evidence, you know, I see this, and this, there, and maybe your photos will be relevant.
Yeah, my phone.
And, and so, and this is what I see, based on this, is likely that hazards exist inside, cause you need him to say that to get the warrant, right? I can't just go get it, I mean, I need, I don't make this stuff up, I copy it from another place, from somebody who has authority to say it. You know, and so, it can be done, why don't you just authorize us to work on it, and I'll give you an update next, maybe we'll have it all done, you know, things go smoothly, but.
Make the motion.
The city attorney and city administrator to pursue obtaining an administrative search warrant and inspection of the inside of the property.
I make both. See that something gets done.
We'll see, we'll do my best. There a second?
Yeah, I did.
Uh, you did have comments? I appreciate your time and. What you rattled off all those, um, hearings and courts and judges, I just see dollar signs. You, you go back and look at that.
That's just quick.
Special meeting.
Need a bone.
That I wanna add to that special meeting.
About them to proceed to help.
Yeah.
To go through the process.
So we gotta set up something else.
So, next, well, we did, you did the motion.
Yep, and you seconded.
And I seconded, so now we're ready for the vote.
All those in favor, say if I could say aye.
Aye.
Prove, so next item is, uh.
Page one thirteen.
Page one thirteen. Four items to discuss. Adoption of our preliminary budget. Potential contract discussion of operations maintenance. Did you wanna say something, Carl?
No, we're just going through the date.
Wait, you're looking at the date, and I said, he said something about a Wednesday, I said, I can't do Wednesday, Monday is the twenty fifth, which is, I can do.
I can't.
Contract for waste management, um, review of those, as well as the Pittsburgh. Versus the same.
And I'd like to add one to that, the review of the updated personnel policies.
They're ready for review?
No, our, our staff meeting is done.
Review that at the October meeting? Council meeting?
No, to the special.
Wanting.
No, the special meeting.
You know, um, if I could just, you know, cause you were saying earlier that. The importance of building this team and on staff, and yet, I. And yet you wanna move ahead with these proposed policy changes. Without them going to staff over consideration.
Honey, I'm not saying not go to staff. So.
But you are, if you're saying.
Yeah, nah, these have been around for over a month, right? That's, I thought that I've given ample time for it to go to staff, I've asked you in that email as well. Explaining that we would take this to whatever staff you wanted to include. And come back with the feedback. I'm not trying to ram this down anyone's throat, I think we've given ample time for it. Cause it came up at what, the July, June or July meeting? And as far as you're saying about the team, this has nothing to do with team. These are, these are things that, that we talked about at council. So I'm not willing to back up on it. I don't know what the rest of you, but I'm, I'm not.
Um, sorry, I was. So, so what, what's the issue now with the, I read the emails, but I just. So you wanna make those, those five, four or five proposed changes?
That we talked about at that council meeting.
And Sonny's objection is what now?
She said the staff haven't been able to review it.
Yeah, their monthly staff meeting. I think her position is she just want, I don't know, I mean, I think she's the administrator and wants to. Administerate, um, in terms of those specific changes, though, we've talked about them, I think, a couple of times now.
We have.
So. Now, the council has to vote on those.
Right, and you had asked that, that I make the updates in the template that, in the new template. That's why we couldn't talk about it that night, so I did that.
So we have a new template for a whole manual?
Yeah, yeah, and, and the request was to make those updates and put those updates in a new template.
So, my main thing with that, if you remember, was to have Nico look at it. Has Nico looked at it yet?
I've not, I have to check my email, I, I haven't seen any email from you.
What did you send, I mean, does he have it, I guess?
Yeah, question.
Yeah, okay. So, he, yeah, he got married, he was gone for a week and a half for a wedding and a honeymoon, or a bachelor party and a wedding or something.
Sure.
You know, so I will.
He did tell me that, I talked with him.
Oh, you did, very good. So, my, my view of all this is. You need to have Nico review what you've done and comment on it. I think that's the most important thing, and then if he, cause he knows, he just did these for a couple of cities, and he's done them many times, he knows what he's doing. And he can advise you if there's problems with what's in there. I think Sonny's objections are about the process. And I'm not sure I could comment on that, I mean, I don't know what else I can say. I think it's important that the city council. When the city council's gonna delegate something to the personnel committee, it's important that they specifically delegate it. Unless it's something that's already in your policy. So like, you have an existing policy, right? And that policy has a bunch of things that the council does, the personnel committee does. It doesn't even reference an administrator, cause you didn't have an administrator when it was drafted. So the new one that you've drafted, by the way, does it reference an administrator?
Yes.
Okay. And is it?
I mean, I, I went based on what you said in that meeting.
The league model, did you just use the league model? Um, did you use the league Minnesota City model policy when you drafted it?
No, we use their template.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, cause that's what you had said, bring it back in that template.
There's two, there's the league, and then we draft our own template that is more conservative than the leagues, but I told you that, if you pick the leagues, that's fine, we do them with the league all the time, so. You need to have Nico review it, did you ask him to review it, or did you?
Yeah.
Okay, so you, and you've talked to him, so where is he at with it then?
Well, he did say that he was going to be out on his wedding, and then, then I, I called and then remembered, oh.
Yeah.
On his wedding, so.
So, I think what you need to do, here's what I would advise. You need to follow up with him and give him a timeline, cause he's super busy, right, so like. Give him and say, you know, you want it by the October meeting, it's this date, can you get me your comments by. Two weeks before that meeting or whatever, whatever you guys decide, and see if he can provide you comments, and then. You know. And ultimately, I think that this dispute is, there's just a dispute about what the changes should be, right? And.
Well, I don't know, because I haven't really, I haven't really gotten any feedback.
There, well, that's, I mean, it's all, but what I'm gonna say is ultimately, when you're changing a manual like that, it's a council, the personnel committee can recommend it, but it's a council decision. The council has to vote on those, the whole council, right?
And, and, and I'll just correct myself, cause there, there was feedback, you were on that memo, the feedback about ours. But there was really no, no other feedback.
Well, I'm talking about the whole memo, like, if you've got a brand new template with a completely different. Personnel policy than you've had before, and you use the league model, cause there's choices in that league model, did you make choices about?
No, actually, it, it was taking what we already had, incorporating. The city administrator into it, and then making, making some changes, but putting it in that template.
So then have Nico read it, and then advise it, and then have Sonny be able to ask Nico questions too, so you can get.
So, so what you were wanting. I'm sorry, so what you were asking to add to this meeting was not just those two or three sections?
It was just those.
And that, that didn't address the city administrator at all, it wasn't.
The city administrator was in there. Did you read those?
I did read them all.
So, yeah, I was, I was questioning a little bit, so like, he said that he made a brand new, complete new template. Including those five changes, but including a lot of other changes too, right?
No, no. No, it was just those. Cause you suggested we make a change to those that were on that list in that meeting.
Right.
But use the new template that was being referred to.
Yeah.
Instead of making the changes in the current template.
Yeah.
That we have, so that's, that's what I did.
I think my advice was, if you wanted to make those changes immediately, cause that's what you said, you wanted those done immediately, and then work on the whole manual later.
Right.
And so I said, that's fine, you can do that, but then don't, you know, you need a new personnel policy, I think. Based on what, what it written, it doesn't fit your, your employment model of.
Right, and we said that we would, we would address that, but.
But yeah, that's, that needs to get addressed, so, I would just work with Nico, ask him these questions, and tell him we need to get it done by October. And then, and have Sonny give access to Nico, so that she can ask questions about the process and. You know, whatever your questions are, I mean, I, I really don't know what else to say about it, other than.
So all I've seen is that section, those sections that you sent by email.
Right, and that's, that's the template, if you look at the book, that is the template, and I grabbed those sections right out of that book.
This current personnel.
Existing personnel policies. I grabbed our existing and, and revamped it. And put it into the new template, in, in those, in those slots.
So we haven't seen that.
Yeah, I, I don't know, Nico, he said he sent it, he said he sent it to Nico though, and talked to him. So, but I think, send it, make sure, maybe just send it one more time, so we're all on the same page.
Sonny got it, Jim got it, Kane got it.
Send it once, so we're all on the same page, that what we're working from. And then make sure Nico does a review of it before the next council, and I think we can get this moving probably. That makes sense?
It does.
Okay, I apologize, I don't know.
I feel we're pushing, we just keep pushing.
I wanted to get this resolved too, so.
So, um, we're okay with this meeting Monday night, six thirty? When is, which Monday night next week? Yeah, twenty fifth. Is that gonna be for the personnel stuff, or is that totally different? So we're gonna hold off on that until. Okay. Cause I don't. Everybody's got back on the same page. Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, I, you'll be here for the, for the meeting? On the next Monday? Yeah. What's the issue? I threw my back out, so I've, that's what I've been walking around.
You again?
Yeah.
The budget lobby?
No, close. Oh, yeah, um, and then the contract with waste management and the contract with the, oh, that, I probably need to, maybe for that one too, the meet with a.
Well, hopefully, that's just.
Hopefully we get it all resolved.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, well, you have a different lawyer for Fitzpatrick. Your time. Right. So I, can I appear by Zoom at that one?
Yes.
Can I appear by Zoom at it? Sure, okay, then I can, I can do it. We'll put that on the agenda. Okay. Alright, good night everybody.
Hey, are we done then?
Do we gotta send? Did I make a motion to reaffirm, to set the agenda?
I, I second wish.
Favor, say if I could say aye?
And adjournments?
I, I, I stopped asking for a question, I had a question on a new, but no, it don't matter. I had a question about new business, and you just neglected me all the way. All I wanted to do was ask.
Jim, you're just whispering to Jim.
No, I wasn't whispering to Jim, I was asking Sonny if we gotta put out a bid, uh, do we gotta make a motion to put out the bid? On the new lawnmower, or you got, or can you just put out the bid, or we gotta make a motion? So, uh, you can just, that's all I was asking. Yeah, question.
Adjournment. Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor say if I could say aye?
Alright, aye.